Good evening. I'm gonna get this, uh, working session to order and we'll start please with the roll call.
Commissioner Beeman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner Labar.
Here.
Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Machewski.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Open it up now for, uh, public participation. This is your opportunity, the working session to provide that public input. A reminder though, that at the start of our meeting at seven o'clock, our full board meeting, you will have three minutes to provide public input. So does anyone here in person want to provide public comment at this time? Okay, uh, seeing none, I'll go to our board director. Do we have anyone online on the internet?
Yes Chair, we have, um, Connie Latimer.
Hello. I'm Connie Latimer. Can you guys hear me?
We, we can hear you and if you'd be kind enough, kind enough just to tell us the community you reside in, that would be good.
Yes.
Keeping purposes.
Yes, I reside in West Willow in Ypsilanti Township. That's where I reside. And I am here excited about the opportunities that are being presented from the, uh, millage that the seniors, uh, voted upon in November. And we are here because we feel like our community has some significant needs. And, um, the needs that would address, s- some of the funds would address some of the needs that our seniors have. I don't know what you want me to say about that. I have had a meeting with, uh, one of the commissioners, Commissioner Justin Hodge, and I am scheduled to have another meeting with, uh, the other commissioner. That's for West Willow, Ms. Annie Hodges. Uh, and then we go into a lot of detail about what we're doing. We already providing services as a grassroots, um, nonprofit entity, Healthy Together West Willow for our, for our, uh, seniors in the community. We already are concerned about a lot of the critical needs, critical health needs such as, uh, high blood pressure, um, um, cholesterol.
Miss, I beg.
High blood sugar.
We, we are limited at, uh, working session to one minute for public comment, but I will reiterate, do have a three-minute opportunity, uh, ahead of the, uh, the full board meeting and another good time just to also indicate, uh, we do not have a commissioner follow-up, agenda item at working session, though we will at the, at the full board meeting. Ashley, anyone else online?
Yes Chair, we have Elizabeth Thompson.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Thompson from Ypsilanti Township. I'm a member of the Washtenaw County Commission on Aging. And I would just like to thank all the commissioners for all the time and effort they've put into, uh, discussing, uh, how to implement the senior millage, all the listening sessions. I know you've had the individual conversations, uh, both with our membership and membership of the community. Uh, and we're looking forward to seeing, um, the final proposal and your final decisions. But again, thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Ashley, anyone else at this time?
That's it Chair.
Great. Move then to, uh, the county, uh, report from the county administrator.
No report Chair.
And under item four, I suspect we might wanna update this, uh, from BOC liaison to whatever the appropriate nomenclature is. Ashley, do you have any update in your?
Yes Chair, just very quickly and in the same line as our working session topic, just wanted to make everyone aware that Commissioners Beeman and Machewski will be having a town hall next Wednesday on the Older Adults Millage at the Chelsea Senior Center. It will run from five until six thirty PM. There's information on the website, um, but just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the town hall.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, we'll move then to our lone discussion item tonight, which is the Older Adults Millage proposal. Uh, and I do wanna thank ahead of time both Commissioners Mas- Machewski and, uh, Somerville, uh, or as I may refer to her, Annie Hodge. Um, I appreciate the work they have, have put in, uh, to this and I wanna turn it over to the two of you, just in terms of format. Do you wanna present from seats, at the podium, mix, whatever's convenient for you, we will adhere to. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Somerville and, uh, Machewski, I, I turn it over to you.
Alright, thank you Chair, I appreciate it. Uh, I wanna note, uh, first of all, thanks for the people that, uh, put the time to comment and public comment and those who are here in the audience, uh, this evening on this issue as well for taking the time to come out. Um, I think this has been a, a much anticipated, uh, discussion for many people in the community about the older adults, uh, millage that we have. We do have some slides, I think, um, that we can begin to go through. Uh, I also wanna note, um, and thank, uh, our board chair, Katie Scott, for her work and collaboration on this as well. Uh, I'm gonna go through the slides and, uh, give an overview of, um, what we have to discuss tonight and invite Commissioner Somerville to interrupt me, uh, whenever, uh, she feels the need to, to interject with additional information, if that's okay with Chair.
Sure, and one quick question on that. Would it be preferable to allow you to sort of both present and interrupt as needed and then have questions at the end? Or do you want us to go, uh, as you go aside from your, your slide presentation?
Yeah, I, I think, I think getting through the slides would be good and then, um, we can get to addressing some issues thereafter. Um, we may answer some of the questions you might have as we get through them. It won't take that long.
We'll conduct ourselves in line with that advice.
Thank you Chair. Uh, so, as we all know, the, the millage was passed, uh, this past November, a half mil. Um, we're gonna cover five components, um, of what I've kind of referred to as a framework and operational, um, policy, um, for us to discuss. Uh, we're gonna discuss an administrative framework, uh, setting board priorities and potential service categories. Um, the idea of what the county could do directly. Uh, fourth would be the, an RFP process and the selection of, um, partners and contractors to, um, do a lot of this work in our community. And finally, oversight and auditing of those contractors, uh, to measure outcomes and results, ultimately feeding back to, um, the decisions that, um, future board of commissioners would make about, um, how to use these dollars. So, uh, starting with an administrative framework, um, I have, uh, put in the document the creation of an Office of Aging Services, which would be responsible for the development, uh, coordination, implementation and administration of, uh, services that this board would approve. Uh, I envision that this position of Director of Aging Services would head that department, reporting directly to the county administrator. Um, and that the Office of Aging Services would, in essence, house the staff, um, that are responsible for, uh, programs for older adults, uh, in our county. Uh, there is an existing component here of, um, some staff that work on nutrition programs, uh, in Washtenaw County. And, um, I would propose that those be, um, shifted over to this Office of Aging Services. Uh, a key component for me in this whole thing is the compilation of an annual report to be given to this board, uh, that would outline the services, programs, resources and outcomes, uh, from the work financed by the Older Adult Millage. Uh, that is to me a very key component of understanding what the impact is of these services in the community, using that information to feed, um, further decisions about how we use these millage dollars. I don't think this is a, anything unusual. We see this with parks, we see this with roads. Uh, simply, um, just taking that kind of model and applying it here. Uh, I've also, uh, written in here that there should be, uh, needs assessments conducted in our community. And I, I propose that on three-year cycles, uh, to occur, as when we get to the RFP part of this, a three-year cycle there as well, uh, with, uh, a needs assessment done by, um, a contracted organization, uh, to, uh, take in all the information that we might have in, in our county and, uh, put together a report which would feed an RFP process the following year. Right? So doing that needs assessment before we do the RFP process every time. So that is the, kind of the rough, um, administrative framework that, now I've outlined in the document. Uh, I think there are a number of priorities that have been discussed. We certainly discussed this a couple of times at working session. Uh, yeah, we've discussed this at some, uh, meetings in the community. Uh, certainly the Commission on Aging has had many discussions, uh, as well as, um, stakeholder groups in the community. And, um, I have written in, uh, those things into this document, uh, which would include, uh, number one, nutrition programs and ensuring that there is no waitlist for home-delivered meals in our county. Uh, when I, uh, began thinking about this more than a year ago, um, I didn't really envision a situation where we might actually not have federal money for meals on wheels. But that is a distinct possibility, um, nowadays. And so the, I, the, the existence of this millage is a key backstop for that potential loss of federal funding. So for me, that's, that's kind of item number one. Number two is the senior center support. I've talked about this a number of times. Uh, a foundational amount, uh, for qualified senior centers and the idea of a qualified senior center, I guess for me at this point really is, a, a senior center that is recognized by its municipal partner, um, that serves a, a region, uh, in our county. Uh, and providing them foundational support so they no longer have to Band-Aid and search for all kinds of different revenues just to have, uh, a full-time staff person and rent and the ability to pay their utilities and the basic things that go into running, uh, a community focal point here in our county. Uh, third, door-to-door transportation. I've, I've certainly heard time and time again, not only from my residents, but from other people in the county, about the need of transportation for older adults, that it is not a main bus line type transportation, that it is door-to-door. Uh, the ability to get people to, and I have, I personally have focused this on clinical appointments, um, and appointments at governmental entities like your, your city hall, your township hall, your county government, uh, and ensuring people can get to clinical appointments, um, non-emergency. Uh, because we know that ma- the ability to get to a doctor's appointment reduces, um, your risk for being admitted to a hospital and improves your general health and welfare overall. Uh, so door-to-door transportation being third. Fourth, uh, the needs assessment, which I've talked a little bit about already and really codifying that as a priority of, of our process. Uh, housing and, uh, I may here, um, shift it to Commissioner Somerville to talk about the housing and homelessness piece, as I, I think she's had some really fantastic contributions on this part, so Commissioner?
Some, thank you. Yeah, um, first I, I, there are a few folks that gave feedback, um, on that part that kind of helped guide the conversations that we had previously that I just wanna, um, uplift, especially, um, Yvonne, um, from my district who, um, highlighted the, the, um, Yvonne um, from my district who um, highlighted the 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 um. Skip program, which is the crisis intervention program for seniors and so um. Obviously, we've been told that the data, the trends are going increasing for folks above um, fifty-five that have become homeless. And so the goal really here is to be able to leverage the millage both to prevent homelessness and get folks who are already homeless off of the streets and into stable housing. Um, one of the things that I'm really excited about, um, in the document, you'll see a proposal. That um, would set aside a certain amount of um. Funding in the millage for an older adult like housing trust that we can use um, to help support the creation and build of um. Housing specifically for seniors. Um, we. Currently, our housing stock in Washtenaw County is not prepared for the amount of folks who will need to downsize. Um, and yeah, so I think that it's just a good thing to be prepared for. And I'm wondering if I'm leaving anything out. I mentioned skip and the fact that this would be used, yeah, for perfection and uh, just totally eliminating older adult homelessness. Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, uh, and I I'm going to go back to uh, maybe three months ago where there was a town hall held in the city of Chelsea. Around housing, uh, and um, some solutions around that. I really think this is a way where we can accumulate. Uh, the ability to partner on developing housing and and combating homelessness and some very innovative ways. So really excited about this part of the proposal. Finally, uh, a really big part of this as well is a request for proposal process. Um, which I would envision incurring occurring every three years. I realize that the first one is twenty twenty-five, the next one is twenty twenty-nine. But realizing that by the time we get through this in twenty twenty-five, the reality is they're probably going to be pretty close to three-year contracts. Um, out with the community partners. Uh, to me, this is really key to capture innovation, to build upon the resources that exist already in Washtenaw County. Enhance those services and programs that are having impact. Uh, and and go beyond uh, what our current capacity is here. Um, and the document itself outlines uh, quite a bit of that process as well. If we want to go to the next slide. The direct services, there are some things that um, we have put into the document that. Um. I will say that I think are best done by uh, the county government and in this Office of Aging um, Services. So the idea of a. A hub or a one-stop shop, I call it an aging resources center. Um, where we can do our outreach on aging. Uh, we as commissioners can go out and talk to older adults and caregivers and say, here's a phone number. Here is an email address. This is the place on the county website you can go to. This is the social media where you can connect with somebody here at the county and actually talk to them. Or communicate with them or chat or whatever the method might be. Uh, but they will um, not just give you a phone number or hand you off. Um, in a cold way, uh, but do it in a way that. Uh, connects you with the resources that are available in our community, tracking those resources, cataloging those resources. Uh, and really um, getting people to those places. So for instance, if somebody were a veteran and they were to call. And maybe the resource identified for them is Michigan Paralyzed Veterans of America. Um, it's not simply giving them the phone number to call over there. It's getting on the phone and doing a three-way call and a warm handoff and saying, hey. Uh, we've got somebody here who happens to live in Dexter and they're a veteran and. Uh, you have a resource that might be applicable for them. And so really connecting people in a real, real way. Um, so to me, that is something that can be done um, at the county level. I think there's a a level of um. Data gathering and consistency that the county can handle very well. So there's a lot that goes into it. There's probably a couple of people on the phone. Uh, there's probably somebody that is what I would call a database curator, somebody that's constantly updating these resources. It's amazing how fast the resources change. Um, and it's not just offices moving, but it's what people are offering or what entities are offering. Um, and so keeping up with that is a key part of it. I think another part of the direct services for me is again, that meals component and bringing that in. Uh, and then the outreach, uh, being out in the community, partnering with us as individual commissioners. Um, doing outreach in the community, but raising awareness about these services that are available. Um, bringing them into underserved communities. Uh, communities where um, you have people that are maybe just above that line of of existing resources that they might qualify for. But reaching out to them and saying, hey, we've got these resources available for you. So that out that outreach is a big part of like what the county can do. Uh, as well.
Oh, I want to also add um, a few pieces. Um, I see this um, office as really playing a big role with the new um. Board of Commissioner um, constituent services um, staff member that we will be hiring. Um, a lot of times I think people are like piecemealing resources. Um, and what will be different once we establish this office and having a constituent out constituent outreach person. Working with all nine of us is they'll be able to proactively direct people, especially because it's going to be new and a lot of folks, it'll take time for people to get. Familiar with us having this office. Um, the other thing, I'll I'll use an example from Ipsy Meals on Wheels. Um, there was a period during my first term where there was a meal being delivered to somebody and they were being evicted like that day. And so I see this office as really being like the hands-on crisis response, like making sure that that person gets connected. Um, not after their stuff's put out to the curb, but before that even happens to make sure that we can avoid that. Um, and then the other thing that I'll say, just in my day job, I've experienced situations with constituents where I've called um. I'll just say, I appreciate all the work that many agencies do, but. I've had situations before where like I've called and then I've gotten a phone number from one agency to go to another agency to go to another. And then kind of like roadblocks and so um, I think what what Commissioner Machiaski outlined of really doing a warm handoff. Um, I think for many of us who kind of understand how to navigate governmental services and nonprofit um. Community organizations, it's um, it might seem easy, but for many folks, it's just, it's complicated, especially because. Some people who might access this office for the first time, the aging resources on space. It could be like a super big crisis moment in their life because something happened that changed for a loved one overnight. And now they're trying to get connected to every possible resource available. Um, and they might be doing it on a minimal, like minimal time because they have work and kids and other things and they became a caregiver overnight. So I think it's really, really important.
Um. I think the next slide will cover the uh, the R F P process. Uh, I do want to note that. I think. We do, we do need to go through a discussion about making sure that this particular process and these proposals. Is in alignment with county procurement policies and making sure that everything lines up there. But um, what I have um, written in is a is a nine-person review committee on the R F P submissions. Uh, which will include members of this body, uh, and um. The Director of Aging Services, County Administrator or or their designee, finance staff, aging office um, staff and three members from the Commission on Aging. Uh, to review proposals that get submitted. Uh, I do view the uh, R F P process as being a very key component of of the millage to again. Um, take advantage of enhanced existing programs in in the county that are serving residents. Um, that have proven to be successful. I also see this as an opportunity for innovation. And the ability to um, be very forward-looking. Uh, I've mentioned before, I think with. The particular millage that we have and the resources that exist in our community, we could be, we could really be a model. Um, not only for counties in Michigan, but nationwide in terms of our ability to do things. Uh, I think we have a lot of um, really good resources in terms of innovation and. Uh, willingness to do things that are groundbreaking in terms of older adults and caregivers. Uh, so I would envision this process occurring, I I, as I mentioned earlier, every three years. Um, giving every Board of Commissioners at least one opportunity um, in its four-year cycle to address these issues. But also give the awarded contractors um, three years to do the work, right? Not have to be in this endless cycle of applying for funding every year. But get an award, get funding, work on it for three years and then come back again. Uh, and hopefully reapply because the work is going well, um, but or maybe adjust. So I view the that kind of three-year cycle as being a really positive thing to reduce the amount of administrative burden of having to do continual applications. And again, kind of apply these things over a little bit of a longer timeframe. I think the next slide will cover um, oversight and auditing. Um. Really key for me is understanding outcomes and making sure that those partners that we enter agreements with. Are delivering on what they are contracted to do, uh, and understanding that. Um, you know, we have um, procurement policies and. Uh, things that we expect when we, when we agree to a contract and an award. And that we will provide oversight and audit, really critical to me. Um, that we do that, to be able to go back to the taxpayers in this county and say. We are operating impactful programs in an above-board and transparent way. Uh, and that would take us to, unless Commissioner Somerville has anything she'd like to add. Um, questions. So, Chair, uh, thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate it.
I was just going to add um, with the slide related to the R F P process, um, I know. Um, we got some questions about like making sure that the makeup of that committee is um, not impartial. Um, and I know that we have policies on some of the boards that I serve on, I have to disclose any um, potential conflicts of interest. And so um, I don't know like to the extent that that's already part of our our process that we use. Um, to stay in alignment with with finance, but um, I think that. I already do this for the Community Mental Health um, Board. Um, and I know that we do that for the Millage Oversight Committee where folks have to disclose. Um, and so I think broadly speaking, um, anytime we have bodies made up of volunteers. Um, we should obviously make it very clear like what a conflict of interest is um, and how um. Important it is to be like disclose that information so that you're not part of a process that you shouldn't be.
Great, uh, thank you for the presentation and I know I have some questions, I suspect others will too, and we'll start with uh, with Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you both for the effort put into this. I know it's a, a lot to do something from scratch. I think it largely captures what we've heard, what I've heard at town halls and from constituents and what we've heard here. I had a couple of questions if it's all right for me to ask them to ask.
Please do.
Okay, uh, okay, one of them is, I think the different, if I'm looking on page two. The different numbers have different levels of specificity and I would wonder if we could build some of that out more. Like for example, number two, around the two hundred thousand dollars or at least two hundred thousand dollars for the senior centers, pretty clear. But less so for some of the other ones. And I want to make sure that we're building in something that's really highlighting that we're allocating a significant amount of funding to low-income seniors. Uh, or a proportional amount that would make sense. Uh, I like the idea around the uh, the trust fund. I thought a lot about that too, so that's, it's a really good idea. Uh, a question I had was around the R F P being three years. Why three and not two? Is it just because of the have a bigger runway or? Was there a specific reason you were thinking three years and not two years?
Um, I've. I I put in three years because I felt that was enough time um, to really. Build and execute something that that you might be contracted to do as a community organization. Um. I also have been cognizant of the comments about um, not too much bureaucracy in this process. So I wanted to um, I initially had thought about four years actually. Uh, but felt that three years was probably a little bit more responsive in terms of. Um, you know, changing needs in the community and and that I'm, I can't say I'm like dead-set on three years. Uh, it's just kind of um, what I felt was a good medium between not too long, not too short.
I'll, I'll just add to that too. I think like when when we did like the ARPA funding, like. There's only so many buckets of like kind of like areas for older adult support and we already, and we know some of the services that are already provided. And so like, for example, like Meals on Wheels, um, that's not going to change a whole lot in three years. Like they are like, the the goal is to fill in gaps and and promote like more access to food and nutrition. Um, but the like the actual like operation itself, um. I don't see like new organizations popping up overnight that are going to fill in um. Gaps in ways that existing um, nutrition organizations are already doing. Um, and so I think it's also to prevent like duplication of efforts too. Um, that's some of the feedback that I've heard in the community um, around not just the older adult millage, but just like services in general, not making sure that um. There's less duplication of services, that way we can um, serve the most um, uh, community members.
Okay. I've I've got more. So I learned about this difference between the door-to-door versus the door-through-door. Uh, is there a reason why we talk about door-to-door as opposed to the through-door because isn't the through-door better in many cases?
So um, the through-door would be the ability to assist somebody, physically assist them out of their home. Uh, and into the transportation vehicle. Um, there are significant more liability issues when you talk about through-door versus door-to-door. Door-to-door being the ability of somebody to.
Commissioner Machieski, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Would you define those terms?
Sure.
Just, thank you.
So door-to-door transportation is is uh, where a vehicle will pull up. Uh, somebody has to exit their their home and basically they can enter the vehicle on their own power, basically. Unless they're in a wheelchair where the driver would then assist them into the vehicle, right? Through-door would be the ability of a driver to enter the home. To go in and assist somebody that may need assistance getting out of their home. Uh, and then into the vehicle. The the. One of the main differences there is it's significantly more legal liability when you're doing through-door. Um, not to say that it isn't a need because it is. Um, and I'm not opposed to that concept. If that's what, you know, we decided to do as a body. We we do have to understand that you get into a different legal and insurance realm.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was other reason besides liability because that's best practice, right, is door-through-door is, or it's more supportive?
It's, I would say it's more supportive.
More supportive, okay. Uh, and I've heard from some constituents that would want as an alternative to that, traveling nurses, sort of like we did during COVID with the Health Department. Is there openness to that somewhere in here?
So that would be, for me, that would be the kind of thing that um, I would. Um, see as an R F P process kind of thing. Uh, take vaccinations, for example. Right, if somebody wanted to pro- propose the idea of providing uh, shingles vaccine. Uh, for X number of older adults, uh, they would propose that and do it on a visiting nurse basis. I could see a proposal like that coming through the R F P process.
Just a couple more. Uh, food, love Meals on Wheels, very pro Meals on Wheels. We get out there, gather and do it. I would want us to think too about pantries and support for pantries, especially given what we're going to be seeing at the federal level around challenges related to that. Um, I would think that your thinking is that would be through the R F P process, even though it's not specifically identified.
Uh, I think we could. I think we could also as a board make a statement that nutrition support would be no waitlist for Meals on Wheels. It would be support for food pantries and at some level, I I I wouldn't. I wouldn't say we couldn't do that either.
Can I add one comment? Um, I got feedback just about like the terminology around um, waitlists and. Ipsy Meals on Wheels and I think Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels, they don't actually have a waitlist. Um, and so some of the feedback that I got was to make some changes to say like fill in gaps and increase future need. Um, just so people don't think that there's uh, waitlists out there for them, but I don't know about other nutrition organizations.
Right. Uh, I would, I would also add to the Meals question that you have. Um, you know, I I would envision that there might be a a process where we come up with. A vision or a strategic plan around what nutrition services for older adults are in Washtenaw County. Uh, and and create that standard and knowing that Ageways, the area Agency on Aging and their nutrition funding could get us to a certain point on that level. Uh, and then we would fill the gap to get to the kind of program that we envisioned want wanting, right? Um, you know, right now, but it's primarily a five-day-a-week hot meal program with some enhancements. Uh, maybe, maybe we want to have a seven-day-a-week hot meal program with uh, you know, a a bold component to it every day. Um, you know, maybe there, whatever those enhancements would be, I would certainly look to. Um, all the Meals programs that are operating right now. Um, and to have a discussion about really, what's our strategic vision for nutrition services for older adults? And come up with that. And to me, that's, that's how I would want to get at that point number one under section four.
Okay, my last one for now, it kind of hits on two things, is around uh, the R F P process for. What would we do around smaller organizations like the person, one of the people that spoke during public comment that's with a a small grassroots organization? I would hope that we would do something like the Community Priority Fund where we'd have technical assistance to be able to support smaller communities, making sure that they have. You know, access to the funds too, which gets to the point around the Office on Aging piece. I would want us to be able to provide a good level of support internally and not just be pushing a ton out of the county.
Um, and the, and the support for the smaller nonprofits for those who. And the, on the support for the smaller nonprofits, for those who might not have the experience in putting these kinds of applications in. Um, I, I think this is a really good opportunity um, for other community partners to come in and help people on a technical basis to learn how to do these kinds of things, how to do the reporting and, and audit compliance and things like that. By learning that skill, these organizations could then also begin applying for other resources, other grants from other foundations. Uh, and bring more dollars into, to expand the impact as well. So I think that is, um, for me, a really key part of trying to build capacity, um, for service delivery is helping people understand how to do an RFP. How to respond, uh, to a compliance audit and things like that.
Thank you.
I'll just add to, um, we got, we did get some feedback from the racial equity office on that and like this process as well as like making sure we're looking at, um, equitable distribution. And so, um, both think that like, I, cause I know the organization that you're talking about, and I've talked to other like smaller, um, like they're not even organization, they're just groups of people that do support for like integration generational support between youth and older adults, that they're not a nonprofit. Um, and so I think we need to be creative in ways to help support that work and not force people to become a nonprofit. When, like when they're doing good stuff like that and just want like a little bit of support to make it more efficient or bolster what they're already doing. So I think there's a way to work through some of that. Um, as well as kind of looking at some of the framework, framework that we've used for the mini grant, um, program that we already have.
Thanks. Thanks, Chair.
Go to, uh, Commissioner Robbie and Commissioners, uh, let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, Chair. This concept is something that I found out about at our last meeting. Uh, obviously it seems that it's, uh, three commissioners that have developed this plan. Uh, and this is our first opportunity as the full board to actually have this discussion. So I obviously wasn't involved in any conversations, uh, that led to this plan being developed, but I do have a few questions. Um, to start though, Andrew, how much money is the millage raising?
Uh, about 11.5 million dollars in the first year. Uh, this was included on last December's tax bill. So that money is already, uh, beginning to be collected. And it is sitting in its own separate fund, uh, waiting, waiting for decisions of the board.
And, uh, did we receive a proposal at a previous meeting, working session of an idea of how we might structure this funding?
Yeah, I, I believe, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, this is, I think, the third, uh, time there's been a discussion at working session. I, I spoke, uh, last fall at some point, and then there was also a presentation from, uh, the staff at OCD, I believe earlier this year. And this, I, if my memory serves me correctly, would be the third, third such presentation or discussion, rather.
Okay, thank you. And so for the commissioners that put this proposal together, what was the rationale for, um, deviating from the proposal that staff brought towards us? What were the deficiencies that you saw in their proposal?
I guess I'd be curious to know what you feel the differences are. Uh, I think that.
A lot more conversation, for example, about OCD being involved in the process and, uh, weatherization and some of the services that the county is already providing, being bolstered and focused uh, in a more universal way on senior services. And I don't see that appear as much in your proposal.
I would say that I don't, I don't think what we've put together discounts any of the services or programs that the, the county might offer that might be, um, you know, able to be impactful here. I think what I, what I took from what Mr. DeLu had presented last fall. Um, and Matt, when I got comments from the community and I looked at it myself, I felt it was a little too heavy on the number of positions to do the work that I felt was actually there. Um, so when I came up with the thought of an office of aging services, uh, I, I believe personally that it would be better as a standalone office, um, not to be, uh, placed inside of O C E D and having to go through different levels of approval on things, but it have its own office, um, and be very, to me is, i- th- these are things that have very clear connection to community. Uh, and so I think it's important when you talk about aging services and caregiver service to have that, that direct link to the county administrator. I, I simply, um, think it's more efficient than putting it inside OCD.
I guess, oh, can I also respond? Um, so I also think one of the reasons why the three of us wanted to propose something, A, like we're closest to the community. As commissioners, we have a different perspective of some of the work that's already being done, some of the gaps. Um, and I see this proposal actually as a culmination of feedback that we've gotten here during our board meetings, feedback that we've gotten, um, out in the community. I participated in town halls specifically related to this millage. Um, I've also engaged in a lot of conversations one-on-one with folks that do work in older adult space throughout the county and some of it, um, two, I think, at the end of the day, because we're the policymakers here, I think, um, the prior presentations that we saw here didn't quite match with where I thought the intentions behind the millage, um, were. And so I think this better aligns with all of the feedback that we've received from the inception of the, um, organization that advocated very heavily for this to all the feedback that we've gotten, both in this room and outside, either by email or conversation. Um, so yeah, I think it has a lot of elements of conversations that we've already had and, and not just with the presentations that we received from county staff, but we had more than one working session just as a group talking about this among the nine of us, um, throughout the last over two years.
Right. And most of those working sessions centered around the proposals that I was alluding to. Um, and so I, I guess the honest truth is that I'm somewhat more convincible on the question of whether it should be at OCD or its own office. I'm open to being convinced on that, that is set on that issue. But I, I did notice that, um, you know, that, that a lot of the service, the direct service provision components are not being done, envisioned to be done by the county in this proposal. Um, is that an appropriate assessment or am I missing something in what you're proposing?
I, I view it as a mix. Um, so I think there are some things that can be directly done by the county. I think one, for me, one of the, the key ones is this aging resource center. Uh, to me, that is very clearly to me, something that the county needs to have responsibility and authority over. Uh, I think there are a range of existing resources with community-based organizations that exist. Um, and that are experts in doing this. Uh, I want, I want to tap into those. Um, so for me, it, this is largely, um, I think there are some things that the county, county should be doing directly, but there are many, many things.
Are there any things beyond the?
Capacity that's already out there.
Beyond the service center, are there any other issue?
Um, nutrition, the o- oversight of nutrition, uh, which is currently going on in OCD. So I think that the county plays a very important role between the existing meals on wheels and congregant meal providers and ageways who's putting funding into this. I, I would, I would want to see that continue. There are many, many rules and regulations around how nutrition programs have to work. And I think the county is the appropriate place to to administrate that. Um, so that would be one example.
How many county staff does your proposal envision to hire in the office of aging?
Um, I don't have a, a number for you because I, I do view this as kind of a, a working document. Uh, so I think for me, uh, I, I wouldn't want to spitball it right here. I, I don't, I don't have a, a number at this point. I have a director I think we need. I think we need to have somebody that's doing outreach on a regular basis. Uh, I think we have somebody that needs to be doing data and outcome and auditing. Um, and whether that's three FTEs or two and a half FTEs, whatever that is, then you've got people that may be in this aging resource center. Um, I know based upon call volumes, I'm probably thinking that's, that could be two people. Um, working in that, you'd have somebody doing, uh, resource, um, uh, or, or resource building, uh, maintaining the resources in the database and making it accessible. Um, you know, so those are to me, the basics there. Um, I hesitate to really go beyond that because uh, until we decide, you know, what is going to be done directly by the county and what's going to be contracted out, I would, I, I working on these programs every day, uh, I, I know that a lot can be done. Uh, and it doesn't necessarily take one FTE to do all the auditing and compliance, right? That can be part of somebody's job that's doing something else. Um, so I hesitate about a full number on it though, because I, without having a fully decided upon approach, um, I, I really couldn't give you the answer I want to stand on.
Okay. Um, I, I guess like one of the things you said kind of bugged me a little bit and I'll just kind of address that, but you said you wanted to, uh, reduce bureaucracy in, in this, and I, and I think I've said this, these meetings before, but I, I don't bureaucracy is a maligned word that's been taken on, uh, different meanings for different people, but I think especially in our current iteration of federal government rhetoric around the value of government. Um, I just want us to be careful about how we're talking about the public workers that are delivering the services that, uh, our presidents depend on. And I think it's no secret how I feel about my priorities in this. Um, if this is too heavy on the RFP contract side, I'm not afraid to vote no on this and be critical of how we're going about this. Um, I'm ambivalent somewhat, like I said, convincing on office of aging versus OCD. My biggest value here is to make sure that we are creating, uh, not just government administrators, but also government service providers to actually deliver some of these services directly to people, which is why I was excited about OCD's involvement on the weatherization side. And I don't see weatherization here. It seemed, that seemed like an area where we could really, um, expand. Uh, I was actually at a, a forum on, um, Saturday talking about, you know, the interplay between the environment and affordability issues when it comes to weatherization. Uh, the county wasn't actually involved in that. I was involved in it, but, um, I think that is a really good area of interplay that maybe fits into the housing, uh, bucket that you guys had, that the county is already doing service provision on, that there may be some uh, ability to, maybe it's not in the office of aging, but the office of aging is working with OCD to provide expanded weatherization services for seniors or something like that. I just don't want all the money to go to this RFP contract process and for it to leave the county and go to service providers. Because as I've said at this table before, I view that as a, as a form of privatization that, and, and as much as we can limit that, you know, I, I don't quite know what the, you know, I, I don't know yet what my level of comfort will be, but I think if, if I see an effort towards, you know, making more government provided services part of this plan, I think that will make me more comfortable, even if there is an RFP component. And my long-term goal will be to, you know, try to have more, because my, I mean, honestly, part of my philosophy on this is like when we're creating government positions, that of government service provision, that government service provision positions, it is an indication of our commitment to something. It's saying, we're not just, you know, on three-year basis saying, okay, this, you know, we're doing this, we're doing this. We've hired somebody, we've made a commitment not only to that staff person, but to the residents of our community. We are going to do this service. This is an important, we've staked our flag in this, in this service that we're going to provide. And I think it, it creates that sense of permanence to the, to the issue. I know people are uncomfortable about, you know, it being a millage, but this is like one of the longer term millages that we have in the county. Eight years is a long time. And so I think we should hire people. I think we should hire people to do this work. And I think that if we can show the voters the value in the services that they're getting and remind them that it's the county providing these services, I think that will help us to get this millage renewed time and time again. Um, and my fear continues to be with the amount of money that we give to RFPs to other entities, and this will come up during our board meeting as well. Um, but, you know, is that people sort of lose sight of the fact that this is a county service that's being provided? Whether it's the county providing it or not, the county providing it, but it gets lost, especially when it's not the county providing. It's obvious when the county provides. Um, and so I guess those are all my thoughts initially. I mean, I appreciate that this is still a work in progress. I would like to see more fleshed out, like who are we actually hiring? And, you know, if by bureaucracy, you mean we don't want like more directors and associate directors and associate associate directors and associate vice presidents of directors, I agree with that. But if by bureaucracy, you mean like government workers providing services, I don't agree with that approach. I do think we should have more government workers providing services like the weatherization program.
So I, I appreciate your comments. I think we have a lot more common ground here than maybe we, we realized five minutes ago. Um, I will say when I, when I, I've heard a lot of comments from the community in my district specifically about not wanting to have large amounts of this millage go into paying staff. People want it into services that are impacting people. That's the, a lot of the feedback that I've been getting. I, I completely agree with you about the weatherization piece. Uh, and I think it maybe not just weatherization, but other things as well, the, the homeless interventions that we're doing. There's got to be collaboration between this potential office, um, and other parts of the county. Uh, I, I think my, my thoughts about the number of staff are more about not having a bunch of, um, vice presidents and officers and directors. Um, I want people who are doing the work that are having impacts, we can put the most money into the community. So I, I do think there's some commonality in, in what we're talking about. Uh, there was one point, other point I was going to make and I forget what it was. I don't know if Commissioner Somerville has anything to add.
I think that when we were working on this draft, we were trying to take into consideration, um, the feedback that we got about wanting to have an office that was internal to the county. Um, doing services that we haven't done before to be better resources to the community. So for me, I see this as, um, us creating more, um, government jobs that are doing this work and working good with our community partners. I don't see it as a either or. Um, I just think too, like on the like nutrition's piece in like particular, um, especially in light of what we learned yesterday just around, um, funding for nutrition programs for older adults. I see this as an opportunity to keep people fed. Um, and if like, I think that there's a place to satisfy like everybody's desires here around, um, doing something new and supporting current work. Um, and I think in like especially with, um, nutrition, that now would be the time for us to use this as a resource to keep people who are currently being fed by these programs fed. Um, and it couldn't have happened at a better time, quite honestly. Um, if, if the reality of what we learned yesterday is, is, um, you know, gonna impact our community, so.
So just, just to build off of that, I, um, I have a few thoughts. I appreciate what's being said. I appreciate, um, Commissioner Maszewski. I, I think we do have more alignment. And I think if, um, if I were to be able to sort of see maybe a more fleshed out version of like what the staff, I know that in Andrew's presentation, he had some staff, you know, but, and so maybe just a better idea of like what that looks like. And it sounds like kind of what you're saying is like the administration of this millage would be in the office of aging. And that the, that OCD could be a essentially like a service provider partnership within the county in some ways, like that are actually providing some of the on-the-ground services. Is that kind of what you're saying?
I would say that OCD is doing on-the-ground services and that there would, I think by, there would, there'd be a necessity to have collaboration between this office and.
Yeah.
The work that they're doing. I don't, I think if we're doing things in the most impactful way, I think it has to be that way.
Yeah. And I, so I guess like if i- in building this out, my suggestion here would be to have, yeah, to have, like, you know, a core office on aging. And I mean, I'm not opposed to even creating new service provider staff within that agency that could, like you said, provide different types of services. And then also having some expansion of the work that's being done, for example, with weather, weatherization. You know, but focused on seniors, like a senior specialist weatherization team at OCD that's funded through the millage. Um, and I think honestly, what I'm looking for is like balance. You know, I know there's a lot of folks that want to put more money out in the RFP world. And I think if I see this more balanced, I think I had criticism of Andrew's initial proposal for being more weighted on the RFP side. A lot of money was going out the door. And I'm hoping that whatever version comes back here, we can have some balance to those two. Uh, more so. And I, and I think that will make me more comfortable to want to proceed with, with that kind of a plan. Um, so it, it sounds like we do have some alignment on these things though. I mean, 11 million dollars thankfully is a good chunk of money to work with, but it does get used up pretty quickly. Once we start giving out, you know, grants and stuff like that. And then the last thing I wanted to say is to Commissioner Somerville's point. Um, I don't disagree with you. I do want to just point out that on, it looks like on page was one, two, three, four. It says that it, these funds should not supplant regular. It says that it, these funds should not supplant regular state, federal or local funding streams. And so we may have, we may want to like rethink that part. Um, because I, I get why you put that in there. It makes sense. You want it to be supplementary services and not, you know, using it to, or, well, maybe let me ask, why did you put that in there? Did you put that in there before we kind of knew where we were at or?
Yeah, so that, that is, to me, I was, what I was thinking about was the nutrition program specifically. So we, we as a county, uh, get money from Ageways, the area agency on aging for nutrition programs. And I wanted to put something in there to say that, um, Ageways can't pull that back, right? We're, we're still going to use that as kind of the foundation of our nutrition program funding and then add to it. Um, so the idea there wasn't, the millage is just going to replace all the money we get from Ageways. That was kind of my, we're still, we're still taking that money.
Got it. Yeah, yeah.
Can I also add something to that? We also put, um, money in for the existing, um, nutrition program like, and I don't think that we either should like eliminate that funding source just because we have a millage now.
Got it. I just, I guess, I see what you're saying and that's why I figured you put that in there. I just don't want it to be like precluding us potentially from doing what you're saying, which is if the federal government pulls money, then we do need to sometimes create, supplant that lost revenue, but anyways, I, I have more thoughts, but I think that's enough.
Go to, uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Um, so I had a couple of notes that I took. One is on page two, um, point one, where it says to ensure. And that term hits me as kind of like, uh, the word shall, which is legally is the strongest terminology you can use. And so it says to ensure that there is no waitlist. So to me, that's like, we're saying, we're going to guarantee that there's no waitlist for home-delivered meals. And I wonder if that might end up causing us some sort of heartburn related to, um, the cost that would be associated with that. I mean, I have had some conversations in the last couple of days. I think there are reasons why we don't have a waitlist. It's not that there aren't people out there. It's that maybe we have not, um, advertised or marketed in such a way that, you know, we've got a, a run on the doors. Um, that's one. Just take notes, because I want to just get through it and then we can, um, the annual allocation, the language seems weak to me. So at least two hundred thousand dollars for qualified senior centers. We're not saying in there that we're capping the current senior centers and that there will not be new ones that may attempt to pop up. We're also not saying in there qualifying, and I know you've answered this before because I've asked it. It's two hundred thousand per center, but that's not what the language says. And so I think that needs to be tightened up. Um, and I also want to make sure that we don't have people making a run on our county that create a qualified senior center because they know they're going to be guaranteed two hundred thousand dollars, right? And then I'm going to move down to number four. I like the trust. But this is going to move me also into my, my questioning about why wouldn't we want to put it up under O C D? Vanity tells me I shouldn't say this, but I am going to say it. I am legitimately the senior sitting on this board. Did you hear me? The seniors sitting on this board. And so when I look at where I am in age and the, the parent that I still have living, um, and the longevity of the parents and grandparents that I've had to live to a hundred and seven years old. I'm looking at this and, and I would prefer, so I've done some math here. The two to three percent of the millage funds at eleven point five would take us to about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars as a trust amount for that first year anyway. And then if we have approximately eighty-five to ninety thousand seniors, we're not breaking that down. That's just flat seniors. We're not, that hasn't been broken down into, um, seniors in need based on whatever, you know, those income qualifications are, that's twenty-five percent of our population in the county, roughly. I would rather see us use some of that funding to hire not necessarily administrative folks, but to hire, um, at least one, maybe two attorneys that make sure that those families and those seniors, um, have the legal advice that they need and are looked after because we know that the system is broken when it comes to courts assigning, attorneys and other professionals to take over someone's estate while they're still living, right? It is terribly broken. I would rather see O C, I just, I feel like O C D has all of the foundational supports that they need. And creating another office costs money as opposed to putting it in an office that already exists and being able to spread out, um, those services because you already have the infrastructure. I would rather see that and then take whatever cost savings we have to have the appropriate professional staff to really be able to be a beast when it comes to protecting those seniors and making sure that they're not being taken advantage of by family or external folks. And then the, the last thing I have, I think at least until you answer me, is page five? We should have numbered these. So one, two, three, four. I'm sorry, page four, uh, under the nine members of the O A, oh, the O A M R C. So as I count these up, the only thing that disturbs me is that I'm not seeing any identifiable community members who have lived experience. So what I did do was I went to the webpage and I looked at the people that are currently represented on that. And I don't know all of them, but I think it's safe to say they likely are not taking advantage of the services that would come with this millage. That may be an assumption on my part, but for those names that I do know on there, they're not standing in line. They don't need meals delivered to their homes. And so I'm concerned that we've got, um, an advisory board. I don't want to say they're elitist, but they're not living this. And we either need to think about expanding that number of nine to something more like eleven and actually finding, I don't know, maybe we find one, um, lived experience community member on the east side and one on the west side, rural earth. But that voice is missing and it needs to be there. And it needs to be there as a check and balance, possibly of some of the privilege that's sitting on that board.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, I've always been supportive of advocating for people with lived experience or in some boards and amount. It's called the consumer. So we can identify, like if we increased it from nine to eleven, we could identify positions for people who have utilized, we can keep it brought older adult services support in Wasna County. Um, because I think that is an important function to have somebody who's actually called or, um, applied for support in other ways. I'll try to back, I'm going to go backwards and try to answer and then I'll let Jason do it. So, um, over, there, there is like in the kind of long list of what is like possible, I think for like funding, um, like under the basic legal services part. I do, like, I think people need help both with like, just like basic documents and then also, um, help getting to like appropriate, um, services, especially when something happens with like elder abuse. I would be curious and maybe like me, you and Jason could have a call and like work through some of this. Um, I don't know, like, you know, what it would look like to have one, like legal services person on staff in this office. But we should, we should talk about that. Um, I don't think that's a bad idea. Um, and then related to qualified like senior centers, um, one of the things that we've discussed is ensuring that like that center has support from like whatever the local regional jurisdiction is. And so like, for example, the Ipsy City Senior Center, they've got to like qualify. They would have to have a resolution that was formally approved by the local body of government, like representing that this is like our local community senior center. In other communities, like it's actually that local municipal government that has the senior center. And so, but still having like a local, like a formal, like if we had a senior center and somebody above us was providing funding for our senior center, we would have to pass a resolution and say that this is our formal senior center to help like, I think, prevent exact, because I had that concern too. What if we had, and I still have that concern with like, are people going to just form nonprofits to try to apply for this funding and duplicate services? And so I think there's ways for us to prevent that from happening. And then, um, your feedback on the, the meal, the nutrition, um, is on point with the feedback that I got instead of saying ensure to, um, just elaborate and say to, um, fill current gaps and future demand because it's going to kind of come and go like this. I think over the next eight years. So I, I don't think we need to include that word. I think we can say fill current gaps and future demand, just like, um, was suggested by a community member. Um, and I think that was everything I did backward and so I'll give it over to Jason now.
Uh, yeah, great points, Commissioner. Thank you. Um, I think in trying to word point number two there in section four, the, the senior center one, I, I was trying to get, and I'm not an attorney, if it isn't clear to you by now. Uh, I was trying to get at the idea of supporting the senior centers that are in our community now and excluding, for example, a healthcare entity coming in and setting up a supply saying, this is a senior center. Yeah, I'm trying to not have that happen. Um, I even toyed with the idea of, do we just list them in the document, right?
Yeah.
You know, Dexter Senior Center, Baker Road, Dexter, Michigan. I mean, that, that's another way to go about it. So, and I very much appreciate the, uh, the use of the word per senior center, not per senior center too. Um, on the legal aid thing, um, I think it's a very intriguing idea uh, in terms of, um, a way to go about providing legal services to do it on staff. Maybe there's some alignment there with some prior comments. I, I certainly think that that's a valuable service and it, and I wrote it as one of the potential RFP examples, but, uh, I'm intrigued by your thought on that.
I, I just think that, and I, I knew, um, I knew your answers were going to trigger one thing that I didn't write down. See, I had a senior moment. I'll get to that. But in answer to, uh, Commissioner, um, um, Machieski's response, my thought is that there's nothing more comforting when you are in a vulnerable position than to have a pit bull at your disposal. And, and so I'm going to respectfully say that having an attorney, um, available, not somebody that you're referred to and then you got a call, a legal, I mean, somebody that is right there that you can be transferred to, that can get your information and try and, and, uh, provide you with some support. That to me is just absolutely one of the most comforting things that someone, especially someone that is aging, bless you, a possibly someone that is aging alone. They don't have anybody else. Um, I think is, I think it's crucial. It's something that we, you know, don't pass the buck. I, it irritates me when, you know, we, we list stuff, you know, we'll help you with basic blah, 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 but you at the end of the day have to figure it out and you don't have the money to hire an attorney. They don't have money to pay that kind of hourly rate, right? That is something that we can provide for them that can be covered by the cost of this millage. And that can also sort of help them with all these other overlapping situations that they may have, which leads me to the thing that I forgot to mention, which is, um, making sure that those users of these systems, and you all have heard me say this ad nauseam. When you are a resident utilizing services, especially by nonprofits, who do you go to when they don't treat you respectfully? What's your backup? We need that for seniors. We need for them to have a place within our system that if they feel like they're being, you know, belittled, ignored, um, not respected, that they have recourse for that and almost immediate recourse, some sort of response, some sort of check and balance to make sure it doesn't occur again and that we fix whatever, uh, caused that to be the case. Do you know what I'm saying? If you, if you've not been raised by elders or been raised around elders, you don't know. There's language. There's non-verbal. All of that goes into them feeling as though they're being respected and they're being heard and they're, and you're not being condescending to them. And we need that built into this so that there's no misunderstanding and that they're, they're, is, they don't feel as though they're not being heard, especially when this is their money. So that was, I think that's.
Can, I'll just, if, if I can respond to, um, I think we've talked about this before, but I think, you know, maybe we can use this millage as an opportunity for organizations that we work with to administer support and funding. You know, we could require that when a service is provided to a client, that they have an opportunity to give feedback. I know that that's been brought up before. And then just on this like legal side of that, I think we need to have like a deeper conversation and maybe include our own, um, staff in corp counsel because we're not going to be able to hire one attorney. And I know this from experience right now, dealing with the issue in my district with, um, Arbor One. Um, even like, i- it's very complicated to give individual legal advice on the fly like that. And so, um, I think that we're going to have to think through this and think about if we are going to do that and we want it to be in-house and a service that people can get on demand. We need to like work through like, well, who qualifies for it? And how many do we think we need to have to actually do an adequate job, um, and provide them with like, you know, with good, um, with, with good attorneys. So, um, I just think it can't just be one, in my opinion.
Can I?
Please.
So I, I would just respond to that by saying, um, I would like for us to think outside of the box and not assume that we don't have some real sharp attorneys out there who, maybe they've retired from their private practice. But this is something that would be in their bailiwick and they would look forward to being able to be of service in that way. They're licensed, they're still can practice, they're still sharp, they're still up to date.
I, I agree. I just, I'm, I'm just thinking and maybe, I don't know how to, um, Commissioner Macheski feels. I, if we're going to do that, I want us to do it really good and I think it's going to require more than one attorney.
So, well, that microphone is effective. Few quick housekeeping items. We will go past seven, just given the depth of the conversation and the necessity to have it. Uh, we, we can do that in our board rules, so, uh, we'll take advantage of that. I have Administrator Dill wanted to say something, then Commissioner Beaman in the queue. I want to offer an opportunity to Commissioner Light and then go back to Commissioner Robbie, and then I'm going to jump in.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm wondering at this point, given the presentations that we've received already, by the way, this is an excellent presentation. I love the content and I love the way that we're thinking about delivery of services. I'm wondering if there's a balance or a common ground in how we provide the programmatic components of an older adults millage to our community. And by common ground, I'm seeing an Office of Aging Services as well as funding those things that we already do well in our, in our organization, uh, to a greater level. So I'm wondering if now is the time for us to think about coming together, given the information that we've heard and providing, uh, an updated presentation that balances the things that we've talked about tonight. Uh, if the board is willing, uh, that is certainly something that, uh, I would love to make sure that, uh, we apply the, the appropriate staff resources to make it happen.
So before we try and answer that question, I would like to get through the substance of the response to this proposal. Uh, but Administrator Dill, were you asking for feedback on that now or after as a future item?
After as a future item, I just wanted to plan it with the, with the body. A- after as a future item, I just wanted to plan it with the, with the body, just to let them know that I do think that there is an opportunity for us uh, to create something that meets the needs of the, of the nine of you. And uh, really will operationalize uh, eleven and a half million dollars annually.
I guess, I'd like to respond briefly. Um, I would like, I would, for me personally, would prefer that after this conversation tonight, that um, Commissioner Macheski and, and Chair Scott and I all take the feedback that we've gotten and um, make some edits to the document. Um, we've done, we've gone in circles a lot around this millage already. Um, and I would prefer, like, for me, I would like it to be Commissioner-driven.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll give you the floor for a question related to this, yes.
I think there's space afterwards to discuss Greg's comments. I, I just know that Commissioner Somerville just made a comment and I wanted to also make a comment since we're going down that road, but.
Um, I, I will facilitate that. Give me a minute to think about the right way to do it, but I hear your point, Use. Um, Commissioner Beeman, I'm gonna go to you. I'm gonna come back to Commissioner Robbie and Commissioner Light, if you want in, let me know. If not, I'm gonna jump in after Commissioner Robbie.
All right. Thank you, Chair. And first I wanna thank everyone who is involved in pulling this together. It's a lot of work. I make reports, I make documents all day long and it's a lot. So thank you um, for putting the work and time and effort into it. So the thing that I wanna call out that I've been hearing a lot from my constituents is getting the money into the community. And when I'm looking at this list, specifically when we're looking at uh, section four, uh, number one is getting those funds to the senior centers. Now, regardless of how this plays out, whether it is a new office, whether it is O C E D, et cetera, is there a way to parallel path getting these funds into the community? Before, meaning specifically to our senior centers, so I'm calling out number one. Before we move into anything that's hiring. And I say this because I'm still slightly scarred by going through the O C E D process. And we have a great director now, but that took a very long time. And I don't wanna sit on these funds when we're seeing not necessarily senior programs at this moment, but we're seeing pantries that are suffering or close to closing, other service providers that are the same. And we know that our senior centers are gonna be next. They just are. They're, they're on the block. They're, they're in that line. So is there a way to parallel path? Because I don't think it's a just a circumstance, a hope that this is number one. Think that it's there for a reason in this list. Can we? Is that the intent? To move the money and?
I'll just, I know that like, this is something that Commissioner Macheski and Chair Scott and I discussed, like needing to, you know, we'd obviously not knowing what's going to happen um, with the new regime at the federal level, but I think it's like totally appropriate for us to consider how we can move more quickly and be flexible this year than other processes have gone in the past. And like, I mean, it's the nine of us that have to vote on distribution of funding. And so I personally think it's a pretty like the, I think the only thing that we would need to work through is like the qualifying senior center part of it and how we can kind of get the, the locals to come up with like a formal, like, this is our area senior center. I don't know if, if Commissioner Macheski has thoughts, but I feel like that part, the senior center part, is the easiest part. And um, I've been telling folks in my community, like, you should just be preparing because this is part, this will be part of whatever, um, or should be part of whatever we approve, because I think we're um, at least from a lot of the conversations I've had with, with colleagues, like, that's a huge element of, of this um, millage. So I don't know. I, I think it's like the easiest part.
I would agree.
Okay. So just, just so that I can clarify, so we could move these funds before hiring for the director? Is that what I'm understanding?
It'll be really quick. I would say that I, I would like to see that happen. Obviously, there's procedural things that the county has to adhere to, but I, I would agree with you. I would like to see that happen.
Minister Dill, do you wanna?
I believe we could make that happen.
Commissioner Beeman, do you have additional questions? Okay. Um, Commissioner Light, I haven't forgotten you. I'm here anytime you want to ask. Uh, Commissioner Robbie, I'm gonna go to you and then come back to me. Thank you, Commissioner Light.
Uh, thank you. Um, I have a list of things, but since it was just mentioned, the senior center uh, topic, I I'm on the fence about this. Uh, I do think that we should try to start the process of at least rolling out an, an office of aging. If that's the direction we wanna go, at the same time, we might not be able to hire everybody to do all that, but I at least want to get the process started. Um, but the question I have about the senior centers is that what we have in here right now is very vague in terms of what are we asking the senior centers to do? Um, do we want them to provide a specific program? Are we just generally supporting senior centers? Um, I guess each senior center may have its own needs. Uh, and do all senior centers, what is, I mean, this kind of gets back to some of the conversation earlier, but what is, what is a senior center and what who is automatically gonna get it? Why are they automatically gonna get it? I, I just think we need to think that case through a little bit, too. I mean, it, it's not maybe, I want it to be easy, but it might not be easy. It might be the easiestest, which might be good enough.
Okay. Um, I think the in, in, in writing parts of this, I I'm trying to be very conscious of the idea of not, not prescribing operations and not prescribing job duties and work things of, of the county, right? So um, what, the point about what are we asking senior centers to do in return for this? Or what, what are we anticipating getting out of this? Um, I, I would anticipate there's some kind of agreement between the county and the senior centers that would be receiving these funds and there would be a list of things that uh, you know, the county would require of them um, to do. I didn't necessarily want to get into spelling all of that out in this document because I felt I was beginning to cross over the line. Um, I probably already crossed over the line with some of the things I wrote in here, but uh, I, I'm trying to be conscious of not necessarily prescribing every single thing. Uh, so, um, but for me, I mean, I would certainly want, I, I view this as a, as a foundational as foundational support for our senior centers, which are community focal points. There are a substantial number of older adults in our community that utilize the senior centers or a variety of programs and services. Um, and the idea that we can support these focal points throughout our county with foundational money, so they, they know they're gonna have a director. They know they're gonna have somebody to run programs. They know they're gonna have the equipment in their kitchen to deliver meals on wheels and be a congruent meal site. That they don't have to worry about where that funding is coming from anymore. Uh, and when I threw out this number last year to some of the senior centers, their reaction was the ability to know that we would have this amount of money to support our basic operations is game-changing for them. It would enable them to use other sources of funding that they're currently using on other things, health and wellness programs, whatever it might be. Um, so that was kind of the thought there, but I, I did kind of err on the side of not trying to prescribe too much because eh, I thought I might be crossing an operational line.
What? What are, uh, yeah.
I was just gonna say, the other thing that we've talked to um, at this table around that is senior centers could also um, apply for a specific um, programmatic dollars under like the list that's in this document of options for um, needs, like gaps, um, like if they wanted to do, uh, I don't know, I could just throw like a random. Hmm. I don't know, like if they there's tons of just like workshops and classes and that could fall into like one of like the smaller like funding allotments, um, that like, so it wouldn't be limited just to the um, standard operational support that we would give. Like, there's other areas, like some centers do more um, programming that would fall into the RFP process that we would have too. So it wouldn't be limited to that. And there's also um, which part of the document, there's another part that talks about um, uh, capital support as well, so.
I guess I do think we should be somewhat like prescribed in terms of setting a range of options. It sounds like you're kind of saying that as well, but I, I think we should give like a range of things that they can do. Maybe it's four or five bullet points. Um, I would also, I would actually be more supportive if we said, okay, all the senior centers are gonna provide this service with the $200,000 that we give them and it's provided to everybody. Um, that's what I, that would be my ideal world, but I know that different communities have different needs and different centers have different needs. But so just really, just as a quick exercise here, so the ones I can you tell me the ones that you know about? Or should we not get into that? Or I'm just trying to picture like, how many senior centers are there in the county and like what? Like, I have a senior center in my district in Ann Arbor. Would that one get funded too?
So if I could, if I could just rattle them off as far as I can picture them on the map in my head. Uh, you've got Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, Dexter, Celine, Chelsea, Manchester, Mylan, Northfield? Am I forgetting any?
We have
Did I say Ipsy?
We have Ipsy, like Ipsy Township and Ipsy City. There's two different centers.
Pittsfield. So those are the, perhaps?
Yeah. Okay, that's helpful. Um,
Would it be fair to say roughly 10 to 15? 10, great.
So that's $2 million if we um, yeah, I guess, what's that?
I was just gonna add something. One thing that I've noticed is that um, seniors will travel around the county to other senior centers for different programs too. So it like, just because there's a senior center in Ipsy City, um, like sometimes people from Pittsfield Township or Ann Arbor or Celine or Superior Township, um, or even like out, like further in Crystal's District where there's not a lot of resources will come into the city or folks in the city will go to Celine. So like, there's a lot of like um, sharing and um, you know, I, like, when I did the town hall in Ipsy Township, people from like all over the county came because they play like different, like athletic related things there that are directed at seniors. And they ended up coming to like the town hall about this millage. So I was surprised at the um, the diversity of like what districts were represented in, in something in my district when we were talking about this millage, for example.
I think it might be helpful for staff to ma- you know, bring us a list. I mean, this is, this is the list, but um, and like, I would be, it would be helpful for me to understand which one of these are like run by a nonprofit versus run by a local government. Um, it'd be helpful to understand if there are more that we didn't list. Um, like says the U of M Senior Center count or not?
You talking Turner?
Turner, yeah. I mean, like, are there ones that were maybe, I, I don't know. I mean, like, I think we just need to like set, there are some parameters that we probably do need to set, like this is what counts as a senior center and like create a definition that defines what a senior center is, so that it isn't just, like you said, like anybody can make a senior center, right? So how do we, how do we set those parameters? And then how do we set the parameters around what we want senior centers to do with money that we're giving them? Um, so those, I guess those are thoughts. Maybe staff can help develop some of that framework if it is something that we are gonna move forward with more rapidly. Like I said, if we do move forward with it, I would like to see some framework around the, the agency also move forward as well. Uh, that leads into another comment I wanted to make around the RFP process and the senior center issue, which is, and this is gonna again come up at our board meeting tonight, but um, I want to know for every nonprofit that receives money from the county, how are they going to recognize the county's contribution to their program? And I know that Toni and her staff have worked on our contracts and Toni and I had a conversation earlier today, and again, this will come up later, but uh, when I, when it's in the contracts, that's great, that they have to say somehow that the county is providing the service. But I want to take it a step further and actually have them tell us how they are going to be recognizing the county's contribution in the work that they're doing. And I think different organizations can do that in different ways. But I think that is an important component, getting back to what I was saying earlier about ensuring that the public recognizes the extent of the impact of their millage dollars on the community if we are gonna be doing some contracting uh, of these services. So that is something I hope can be included in that. Uh, another comment is um, on Commissioner Sanders' comments, I hundred percent agree with everything that you said, uh, Commissioner Sanders, and I fully support your uh, you know, idea of creating some legal resources. I do think that since we have um, the Public Defender's Office and the Prosecutor's Office, potentially there's some room for partnership there of bringing some of those attorney um, you know, resources uh, into a partnership with the Office of Aging. Uh, but I do think that having some staff attorneys, like Commissioner Somerville was saying, we probably can't just have one. Uh, but I think actually in addition to attorneys, we probably also need like caseworkers or advocates and that might fit into the um, call center idea uh, framework that you guys were talking about. But I, I really like the idea of having some kind of an advocate, maybe they don't even have to all be, you know, there should be some lawyers, but maybe they don't all even have to be lawyers of people that can, that seniors can call to like navigate through social systems that exist. Uh, because Commissioner Sanders is absolutely right. There's so many times that people, and often, you know, sometimes it's, systems take advantage of people and sometimes it's uh, people don't understand how systems work or they're losing some of their functionality. And so it's, you know, opportunities to uh, you know, have that resource at the county, I think are really, really, really crucial and important. Um, and I really wanna underscore the comment that Caroline Sanders made about um, the uh, issue of ensuring that the service providers, if we do the RFP process, that the service providers that provide the service are actually delivering uh, the services to the degree that the people that are consuming the service are um, are satisfied with. And having some advocates within the Office of Aging that can sort of be uh, the, the state way of saying it is sort of like ombudsman, um, to sort of oversee that process and make sure that if you didn't receive good services at a nonprofit that, that's receiving money from the county, that you can come to somebody at the county and say, hey, this is a problem. This is happening. I tried to get this service. They're not giving it to me. And so I do think that having that check and balance within the system is really important. So just wanted to underscore um, those items. Uh,
Commissioner Robbie, I'm gonna interrupt real quick. Commissioner Light, did your hand go up? Okay, we'll go to you and then me.
Why don't I just pause? I had two other, but let me just do one quick thing and then I wanna come back to the process question and I'll do that later. The last thing I wanted to ask is about the interest. I know this was the concern that Commissioner Beeman had about not spending the money. Are, what is happening to the interest being earned on the 11.5 million? Are we, is there a way to keep that um, with senior services so that the money that, I mean, I know the economy's not doing great right now, but the interest that's being earned, can we make sure that that money augments that 11.5 million in the end of what we put out the door for this year?
Yes or no?
Yes.
You're great. Sorry to truncate. I'm just trying to facilitate everybody here. Uh, Commissioner Light?
Uh, real quick, thank you all for uh, putting this presentation together. Um, I have a couple suggestions and one could be for uh, the commissioners to take a trip or tour um, to our different community centers, uh, senior community centers. Um, as I frequent um, Dexter Community is Dexter Senior Center, um, the Ypsilanti Senior Center, um, and the Ypsilanti Township Senior Center. I think that would be something for us to go and see how programming works. Um, how they utilize the services. Um, a lot of the um, within that $200,000 for for instance, uh, the Northfield, and I, I frequent there a lot too, the Northfield Senior Center um, was having a issue with getting their furnaces replaced through the township and they didn't have the funding. So utilizing some of this, I won't say guaranteed, but some of this funding um, could be something that is available um, for them to be able to just go ahead and they don't have to call Commissioner Light and say, hey, we can't get a furnace. Um, it's like 20 plus years old and we've been repairing it and they said we cannot repair it anymore. So instead of us having to come up with a way to do so, then those funds will be able to provide um, new furnaces. So that, that's one example. Um, and I don't, I would not like for us to put um, limitations or obligations per se on how um, it, it should or have to be spent necessarily. I mean, it, there will be, but um, let's not limit them to too much of saying, okay, it can only be for this amount of programming or it can only be for um, whatever have you that we prescribe to them. Um, each senior center has different uh, things and needs. And so I think if we, if we go and we speak and talk and have the conversations with each center that we can um, we'll be able to understand uh, that this could work well. But I think we have to visit them. We have to talk to them and have those conversations in order to understand um, how this is gonna work. And if we don't do that, um, then a lot of this draft is going to seem out of place. And we're gonna have so many questions because we have not um, sat down personally to do so. So that's just my input.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Light. Um, and I, I'll say a few things and open it back up. I'm cognizant of time, but at the same time, it's also a productive discussion. Um, one first to Jason and Annie, I really appreciate the substance and time that you have put into this. Uh, Jason, I know professionally in your life, this is sort of uh, what you do and what you've done, and I wanna, I wanna recognize that. Uh, and that sort of harnessing uh, a big organization towards a common direction with money involved on a timeline is, is difficult. And Annie, I think you have a particular skill set, given your experience in Lansing, but also candidly, uh, serving on CMH board with me. Understanding the interaction between uh, a general function of government. And time limited specified funds that are coming in and how you balance it. And I, I think you're wise to um. To seek to emulate some of what we do with the committee you chair, the Millage Advisory Committee. Uh, I got some feedback from providers and I offered to sort of be their cipher to ask questions. You have largely answered them, but I will try and boil them down quickly to say, um, like. Has been said, I'm hoping not to spend a bunch of money on RFPs that aren't necessary. The biggest thing is I don't want to spend a bunch of money on consulting. And sort of church and stuff up. I'd, I'd, I'd rather go the, the service distribution route. This is a marriage between multiple inputs we've heard. And what we heard from O C E D, what we heard from Andrew, what we heard from community groups and candidly, the conversations you've had with the nine of us. And so I appreciate that to some degree, you're, you're, you're trying to accommodate multiple interests moving at the same time in different directions. Um, I could work with this. Uh, my preference would be largely to uh, shoot money into the existing external providers. Pick one or two things that we are gonna do in-house and just do the heck out of it. Um, full bore in, in, in terms of uh, just that's a county thing, we're doing it. The biggest thing that I hear echoing through what Commissioner Sanders has said and Commissioner Robbie has said. This need to balance the reality that. Government is useful if you need to yell at someone and say, this didn't work. I'm not being provided the services and rights I'm due as a, as a, as a community member. And I need to know ultimately who can I seek accountability from, who can I, uh, you know, seek justice from? I, I think we have to because of the size of the dollars coming in and the size of the challenge. We have to lean on deputizing external entities and make a trade with them to say, you guys are in the space, you've got the experience. We will provide you some capacity. In exchange, however, you need to provide better visibility of public dollars. To, to some of what Commissioner Robbie is talking about. And two, you need to go above and beyond existing contractual or relationship guidelines. In terms of connecting service distribution with accountability of service effectiveness and access to, to service policy. And that's a long-winded way of saying, if you're getting county dollars to do stuff on our behalf. You, you've got to go above and beyond in terms of making that transparent and accessible again, so that folks know who can I yell at, when, where and how. Food, we ought to add senior cafes in there. I suspect you're already on top of that. Poor people, people in crisis, people navigating the worst parts of the system. I think we should explicitly emphasize. That we filter, starting with those individuals in our older uh, community members or whatever the term of art is and say. These are all dollars that are raised for county uh, purpose, but we're gonna make uh, explicit targeted. Use to begin with those folks because they're most at risk and they're most, they're, they're least likely to be able to navigate these systems on their own. Um, I'm cognizant, this pig is in the barn and we gotta get it out of the barn. I would suggest. I would take a third or a half of what we are taking in this year. And come up with an ad hoc process to get it out now to external entities. Not because that's the best way to do it or, or the most thoughtful or planful. But because take an instance like J F S, a lot of those external entities are responding in real time. To service populations that are being harmed by uh, the Trump administration and external circumstance. Tariffs will only magnify that. So I'm not saying that's how we do it for forever, but buy ourselves another four months to cook this pie up a little bit more. And I guess I'm saying that really to the nine of us, not that that needs to be perfect, but maybe we should just. Sort of give a head nod on that and, 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 and do that in tandem or uh, and uh, uh, on a parallel track as, as Commissioner Beaman said. Finally, uh. I think the question of RFP is a good one. We don't want to essentially. Make steps simply to sort of feed the, the system of iterating and getting consultation and input and all that. At the same time, the RFP is a transbil- uh, transparency mechanism. And it does prevent us from saying, well, we're just doing it that way because we want to. So I don't know the right balance there, but I suspect we can speak to the multiple values that have, that have been brought up. I appreciate again the, the work you've, you've done and um. I think there are probably providers who are watching this right now and will say something like. Oh my God, we watched you talk for eighty minutes about uh, how to spend money that you have in hand. And, and that's true and it's not um. It's, it is, it is sometimes not the, the, the most elegant process. But it's needed and necessary, and if we do it now, w- w- we'll save a lot of pain. Uh, and get a lot more things right on the, on the backend uh, years from now. So my questions have been answered in large part. I've made the points I want to make. Uh, again, I'm cognizant of time, but are there any follow-ups at this point? Uh, that we need to make in this uh, in this meeting? I'm gonna go to Commissioners Mashieski, then Somerville, then back to Robbie.
All right, I will simply say that I, I want to address the senior cafe point that you made, Commissioner. Um, senior cafes are kind of the, the modern term for congregate meals largely. Uh, congregant meals are part of the nutrition programs. So in my mind, that the idea of the senior cafe is already kind of built in.
You, you've accommodated my ignorance. Thank you.
Um, I, I would just want to add that um. I, I, first of all, I need to thank Ashley and Andrew um, for your work on this over the past little year. Um, in helping us bring, have these multiple discussions now at working session. Um, so I wanted to recognize them for their work as well. Um, I want to say that um, I was, I happened to be in Washington yesterday. And for my day job, we, we, we were, is our Capitol Hill day and we were out visiting members of Congress. And unfortunately, it was maybe the darkest day in the history of aging services. Because yesterday, the administration for community living was destroyed by the Trump administration with ten thousand layoffs. And it was really difficult to be in a city to see the federal partners that I work with in my day job, losing their jobs. Decimating the field staff um, at the administration on community living. And the decades of knowledge and experience and ability that those people had. To see on, and I'm sure it was broadcast nationally, but to see on local TV in Washington, lines of federal employees. Seeing if their badges would work at the door was disgraceful. And unfortunately, that stuff is gonna trickle down on us eventually. Um, and so I deeply appreciate the engagement on this and the time, Chair, that you've given us to discuss it tonight. Um, I look forward to making this a better document, bringing this forward and having impact in our community. So I want to thank all of you for the, the engagement on this as well.
Commissioner Somerville?
I want to respond to one, one of the comments that you made and then just kind of broadly. Um, some of the feedback that I got, at least in my district, um, and I think it can be used kind of across many areas. There are a lot of residents in Washington County, especially because like Ypsilanti is in the same county as Ann Arbor where. Um, the cost of living and like what is actually like makes somebody um, like low income versus not meet those guidelines isn't a whole lot. And then they don't get services. And so I do like totally think like from like an equity lens, we need to prioritize. Like low income folks who need a lot of support, but there's also a whole population of people who fall just outside. Of um, getting support that we should consider with this millage. Um, especially as the world around us and other supports that they might have gotten through like federal um, programs that maybe don't pass through us. Um, when the, like as those go away and as people lose their jobs and maybe need to access services for the first time, but still don't fall in that um. Guideline. Um, so I just want us to be mindful of that and that's feedback that I got in my district in particular. Um, the second thing, uh, I again, really appreciate the conversation tonight. I think it was really um, productive. Um, I think it's clear that like we need to have some follow-up conversations with Commissioner Sanders about some of the ideas, especially around the legal support. Um, I think there are really good ideas. And then I think um, two with Commissioner Robbie's um, questions just around like how many staff? I think like flush it out more and I've also, I know I've brought it up before, but I think the millage also allows us an avenue to work with some of our community partners and talk about ways. For different organizations to merge together and maybe we have some staff like for senior centers, for example. There might be an opportunity for us to create county positions that support those centers. That way we can utilize our, like our benefits and they can be like government employees, but they work at like. The Ypsilanti Senior Center, just giving that an example because it's my district. Um, and so I think like. I don't want you to leave and feel like nobody listened to like your point um, about wanting more. Like to use this as an opportunity to also create new positions internal to the county for government jobs. Um, I think there's an opportunity to accommodate um, some of the feedback that you've shared tonight. Um, and I'd be happy to have more conversations about that. Um, but it's, it's eight years and we have a lot of room to tweak and fix. And, and think about innovative ways to stretch the dollars for people while also. Um, I think giving like the staff um, an opportunity to, or people who do this work, an opportunity to be employees of the county. Um, and so I don't, I wanted to make sure to say that. Um, and that's, I think it was a really productive conversation and thanks Chair for um. Allo- allowing us to go over the normal time.
You bet, you bet. Uh, Commissioner Robbie?
Uh, thank you for that. I look forward to working with you on this. Um, I do want to say in terms of how to move forward, I appreciated that the administrator offered to. You know, work on syn- synthesizing some of the conversation here and I. I, I will say like it, it makes me a little uncomfortable that this is commissioner driven. I mean, I think it, it should be commissioner driven at this table with all of us. Um, and I do think that it's the administrator's role to play to like help to synthesize this and make this into a formal proposal that's gonna actually, you know, help us move forward. So. I hope that what happens next is involves the administrator and the staff that he deems appropriate in the process of developing this. Uh, and I would love to be involved. It sounds like Commissioner Sanders, sounds like others. Um, and really this, this table and this open meeting is the op, is the place that we should be having these, these conversations. Recognizing that there is some work that has to happen in between. Uh, I don't, I don't want to feel excluded from that process. And I think the best way to feel that is for the administrator who we've all appointed to do this job, to at least be involved in the process. Um, and obviously to have that line of communication, as you're saying, br- you know, while this is being worked on. I also don't want to lose the, I don't want to, I don't think it should just be the administrator either because I don't want to lose both of your valuable insights in it. But I do want to make sure that everybody is part of this process and that it doesn't become commissioners versus staff. I think it needs to be iterative and kind of everybody working together to create a proposal based on these, these conversations that are happening.
Uh, any other questions or comments at this time on this discussion item? Great. Uh, we'll move then to items for current or future discussion, any of those at this time. Uh, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, um, why don't we plan for seven thirty? Cause that's, looks like twelve minutes. Uh, to entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there support? All those in favor say aye, aye, we are adjourned. All those in favor say aye, aye, we are adjourned.
Evening everyone. Uh, I'm going to call this April second, uh, Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The first order of business is that we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thanks everyone. Um, Ashlyn, would you like to call the roll?
Commissioner Beeman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner LaBar.
Here.
Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Macheski.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Somerville.
Here. Yeah, Commissioner Sanders is here, but she's, huh, there you go. Okay. It's like a voice from another room. Alright, so at this time in the meeting, we'll have public participation. Um, if you are in the room and you'd like to give pu- what? Don't we do public participation first? I think usually I've done public participation first, but I can, go ahead. They are, it is my meeting, um, but I will move it up. We have, um, before we do public participation, we will do, um, give at least one of the resolutions that we have right now, um, to, uh, community member who's here. This is a resolution, um, to proclaiming April thirteenth through April nineteenth as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. And I have Commissioner Hodge going to the microphone to present that resolution.
Alright, thank you. Because somebody's here to receive it, right? Oh, well, come on over. Don't hide in the corner. Alright. Well, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution here. Uh, I'm sorry the text is so small, but you know, we could have everybody signature on there. There's a lot of people have to sign it. So it's a resolution proclaiming the week of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five through April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Washtenaw County. Whereas emergencies can and do occur at any time throughout Washtenaw County, and whereas the prompt response of law enforcement, officers, firefighters, paramedics, and other public safe, safety and human services professionals is critical to the protection of life, preservation of property and quality of life in Washtenaw County. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of Washtenaw Metro Dispatch are responsible for serving ninety-five percent of Washtenaw County's population, in addition to the approximately eighty thousand daily commuters. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of Washtenaw Metro Dispatch dispatch over twenty, oh, two hundred and twenty thousand calls, that's a lot of calls, for law enforcement response for the Ann Arbor Police Department, uh, the Department of Natural Resources, Huron Clinton Metro Parks Police, Michigan State Police, Myland Police, Northfield Township Public Safety, Pittsfield Township Public Safety, Saline Police, Washtenaw Community College, Public Safety, Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, and Ypsilanti Police. And whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact Washtenaw Metro Dispatch. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single most vital link for law enforcement responders by coordinating responding units, monitoring activities by radio, and providing responders with critical information to ensure their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications have mastered a wide array of advanced technologies and the performance of these duties, including computer-aided dispatch, next-generation nine-one-one, eight hundred megahertz radio, and law enforcement information systems. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of Washtenaw Metro Dispatch have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, rescue of trapped victims, and treatment of injured or ill patients. And whereas each telecommunications has exhibited compassion, understanding and professionalism during the performance of their duties over the past year, now therefore be resolved that the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners hereby declares the week of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five through April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Washtenaw County. And be it further resolved that the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners join in honoring the public safety telecommunications of Washtenaw Metro Dispatch who diligently and professionally answer the call to serve and help Washtenaw County's communities, neighborhood schools, and businesses stay safe. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you on behalf of the sheriff. She wants to pass along her thanks as well. We are holding it down at dispatch. Everyone's trying their best to support the community in all of the changes, and we do really appreciate how much this means to them. And thank you for recognizing them.
Before you go, you may have, um, commissioners at the table who want to say something. I see one right next to me, Commissioner Robbie.
Thank you, eagerly raising my hand. I just wanted to add my thanks and appreciation, obviously, signing the resolution uh, that we all did, and I just wanted to add, you know, how much appreciation I have for the work that you all do. Please relay to all of your colleagues, um, you know, how much it does mean to all of our community members to have you, you know, it's that sense of security, right? To know that we can call you when, in our times of need and, and make sure that there's somebody, there's a voice there that will answer and uh, help guide us through the crisis that, um, that we're in and help make sure that help is on the way. So the role that you play in our community is an extremely valuable one. It's not easy to be a public employee, uh, and it's not easy to have, uh, you know, uh, a lot of phones ringing at the same time and you're trying to balance all of it. Uh, but you all do a phenomenal job and just want to appreciate the work that you do day in and day out for all of our community members, so.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Commissioner Sanders? I'm the one that never likes signing resolutions. I just, I don't know, I just don't like it.
Fair.
But, um, I wanted to say thank you, um, to you and your colleagues for the work that you do. Um, you know, we've, you know that there's been a transition. And I want to acknowledge that I know how difficult it can be to sort of put your head down and concentrate and ignore the noise that's going on around you. And as someone who has had to utilize the services of, of dispatch before, um, a couple of times actually in emergencies, I really appreciate, um, the professionalism and, um, the work that you all are dedicated to doing, because I think oftentimes people underestimate. You know, we give the, the glory to the police officers and the sheriff deputies. No pun intended, because I, I appreciate my sheriff deputies as well. Um, but you are the nucleus for getting the services out that the residents need, and that is often underestimated. And so I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I hope that you will continue to be able to concentrate and, and, and do the work that you know the residents need. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Um, Lee Hathaway, thank you for being here, um, and taking this resolution back to the people you work with.
you work with. I think that people don't also always realize how much... How stressful the job can be. I haven't been to our Dispatch Center, but I've been to the Dispatch Center, HVA, and it is... It is always busy. People are calling you when they're scared, something horrible has happened, and the ability you have to stay calm and help direct people and direct services to them is really phenomenal. I love Commissioner Sanders' analogy of the nucleus. I think that's so good, and that's exactly what you are. So thank you very much for that work. If you've ever tried to talk somebody through a crisis, it is not easy.
No, it's not.
So thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that work, and please send back our fondest regards to everybody you work with.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. No pictures. All right, now we will do public participation. If you are here in the room and you'd like to participate in our meeting, this is the time. You have three minutes to make public comment. There is a light system that goes on at the podium, green, you're good to go. Yellow, your time is almost up. Red, your time is up. We'll ask you to voluntarily stop yourself at that time. If you don't, I will interrupt you, not because I'm rude and wasn't brought up right, but because I'm trying to maintain fairness for everybody in the room. The only requirements we have for you, other than that rule time, is please, when you come, state your name and where you live in a broad stroke, city or township is fine, and at the end of public participation, we will respond as a whole to the comments. We don't respond individually. So first up, I see you're ready. Come on up.
Hello. Thank you. I'm Monica Prince. Most of you know me, I think, and I live in the township of Ypsilanti, and I work in the city of Ypsilanti at the Ypsilanti Senior Center. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the millage money being spent, and right now, knowing the feel of what seniors are going through, they're scared. They're really scared that things are gonna... Sort of a little anecdote is my sisters and I get together every two weeks on Zoom and talk, and my one sister was saying that with her little pensions that she has, if she doesn't get social security, she's going to be living out of her car. And I said, oh, well, come move to YPSY, and my older sister said, yeah, she has a bigger car. And I said, yeah, I can put a mattress in the back of my car at least. But that's how people are starting to feel. But honest, more serious. One thing, when I started working at the YPSY Senior Center 19 years ago, I had... We were on a budget of about $30,000 a year. I worked part-time. I had another part-time staff member, and I had to work... My major focus was to get partnerships, and there's no... Nothing wrong with partnerships that, you know, there's people that know things better than anyone else. It's... There's nothing wrong with getting services in other areas and helping them pay for it. The other thing I wanted to say is that I'd really like there to be flexibility... Flexibility to... Built-in. The Senior Center just recently had a major flood. We had a pipe break, and we're going to be closed for probably another month, and I think I'm being optimistic about that, because we're fighting with insurance companies. But we really... The one thing I could not replace, we got other places for activities, I could not get meals for the people. Our congregate meals were closed, and they said we definitely could not have frozen meals. We couldn't do anything, have grab-and-go meals. And that really bothers me, that there's so many people that were not able... Are not able to get that food from the Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening. I'm Bruce Astron. I am in my second term on the Commission on Aging. I'm also in my sixth decade of working on these issues, so it's been a lifetime since I left Ann Arbor in the late '60s, and I'm very happy to be able to be here and share a few comments. I sat through the first working session, and I really appreciate the work people are doing. I appreciate Andrews getting the ball rolling on some of this stuff, and I appreciate many of the commissioners' hard work and pushing things forward. I think we're... I think it's a good start, but there's a long ways to go, and I'll get to that in a minute. One point I would like to urge is Commissioner Sanders mentioned that she's one of the few who's actually an official senior. I'm in my mid-70s, and I've been working on these things for quite a while. There's a lot of us on the Commission on Aging and a lot of people in the community who really, really know aging issues, and I think we need to draw them in even more. It's nice to have a role on the... The, you know, approving the RFPs and things like that, but I do think that there's an important role for people to play on an ongoing basis. The other thing I wanted to say is, I think I'm in... I live in Ann Arbor, and I'm in the same district with Commissioner Robbie, and I wanted to really briefly speak to Commissioner Robbie's, the discussion point that came up about the role of government and government workers. I've worked in three different state governments over my lifetime, and I really appreciate the role of government. I think it would be easier for the population to accept more workers working on issues that are important to them if the county and the state actually put more resources other than the millage into aging-related issues. There really is a very limited amount of that historically, not only in Washtenaw County, but nationally. Finally, I want to end with just a small analogy, a simple analogy, that speaks to sort of the larger politics around not just the aging question, but a lot of the other aging issues. That is, on Election Day, two things were set in motion. One was a small... A plan to support the design and the launch of a small boat, the millage, a boat that carried some goods and services to a population that really, really needs it, an underserved population. At the same time, unprecedented storm was brewing and has come forth and has really started to destroy the very organizations and communities that are needed to support that boat and its work, and it's overwhelming a lot of things. And I just wanted to leave that as the analogy for people to think about. We need to do more, as Cory Booker said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public comment?
G.R. Haley, YPSY Township. And good evening to everybody. Well, I'd just like to talk to you about how it comes at the end, but I kind of got to get through a couple of things. When I first started going to college, a local college, I got a job working for the parking people at the college. I know that's not good for people, because they don't like people who give them tickets, but as I was being trained, and one of the... Self, by one of the people, we went to a spot where there was a car with a parking handicap spot that didn't have a handicap tag on it, and I said, well, we should give them that car, you know, ticket for parking in the spot. Person training looked at me and said, we don't, because that's the vice president of the college's car, and he always parks there in that spot. So I decided to still give him a ticket, because that's ain't the right thing to do, and hence I didn't last long at that job after that one. The next time something like that happened to me, I was working as a plant chemist and just in a little factory outside Ann Arbor, and I wanted to have them do the right thing. They were actually polluting the environment with a whole bunch of stuff, things that they shouldn't be doing, and they didn't want to do it. And to get around the testing, they actually had all the people at the equipment running stuff through the machine, but just running water. So as they were testing the water, it would test clean and not... No pollutants. I saw this several times. I, you know, made issues with what should be done. They didn't like that, so a week after my daughter was born, they actually fired me from the job. I made a call shortly after that to the DEQ. I informed of everything I knew, what exactly how they were doing it, how they were storing things, and what chemicals they were using. Hence, you know, doing that, you know, over two dozen people lost their jobs, but it was the right thing to do. The third time was when I worked at the college, and I already told you about that one. What I want to go is back to the one with the chemical plant. As commissioners, if you can do something, when you all have testing for these plants, you should never call them up and go, hey, we're going to be there Monday at 10 o'clock, because it always gives them opportunity to do what people I did do. Should call them up, say, hey, we're going to come Monday through Friday, nine to five. You create the uncertainty for them, so they cannot plan to deceive, and there are people that will deceive you to get by these laws and still pollute the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Don't be afeared.
Hi. My name's Eileen Cosner. I live in Myland, Michigan, Augusta Township. I've lived in Augusta Township for over 40 years, and I'm concerned about the FBI training facility being built in our area without proper approval or consideration for the residents. The facility, which is owned by the city of Myland, was agreed upon in a memorandum in September of 2021 without the necessary approvals from the Township Planning Commission or Board. Residents within 500 yards of the property line were not notified, and no demographic studies or sound studies were conducted. Furthermore, no sound barriers were installed, and we've been told that no funds are available for sound mitigation. Phase two of the project is set to begin this spring. Many parties... And as far as we know, there has still been no approved sound protection in the next phase. Many parties are at fault, including those issuing permits, Myland for not seeking township approval, and the township for not enforcing the zoning and ensuring sound protection for residents. I've been told that sound protection can be obtained for around $450,000, which seems like a small price to pay to mitigate the impact of the facility that was poorly placed. The constant shooting sounds like a war zone, with shootings sometimes lasting up to eight hours a day, which is unbearable for the residents, especially the at least seven children that I know of that live 500 yards from it. We can see the wall that wears that. I should add that the Augusta Township lawyer said that we had a case, they were ready to move forward, and then we had an election. We got a new supervisor, and things changed. The township lawyer was not assigned any more new cases, and all litigation that was in the process was stopped. Myland said all the funds have to come from the FBI, but Myland owns the property. Myland is the overseers of the property. Myland will end up making money from the property, so they also should be held responsible for some of the funding. That property is... I can see it from my backyard. It goes on for hours. There are times when they are shooting... The FBI, when they're training, are shooting numerous guns at one time. It's not a single person shooting, you know? Sometimes it is. More times than not, it's not. It's not unusual for it to be three or four days a week, at least four hours a day, but there are instances where it is eight hours, and it also can be on the weekends, and it can be in evenings. I'm desperate for help. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room for public comment? Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. Well, I'm Wendy Albers. I live in Augusta Township and really came here to support Eileen, but in previous conversation that the board, the governor, governing board before us, which I'm not sure what it is, because this is my first time here in a very long time, I loved the conversation that I was hearing about so many people coming together to solve and work on this issue of senior services, and there's so much that can be done and accomplished when you have people working together, where there's open, transparent conversations. This is a unique situation in that you've got Myland, you've got Washtenaw County, you've got Monroe County. The land that she's referring to was actually in Augusta Township, and it's just a perfect storm of where things slipped through the cracks, sorry, because people, when they were coming to the county for permits, right? People assumed that all the parties were involved, but Augusta Township did not know what was happening. Okay? And so therefore, you go back and you look at meeting minutes in Myland, there was nothing in their planning commission, because it was not in happening in Myland proper, it was happening in Augusta Township. Myland and Augusta share Carlisle-Wortman as a planning agency. Carlisle-Wortman did not have conversations with both municipalities around what was going on. So we're now left with, while the range was built, and it really started, I think, going in operation in late '23, '24, there was constant shooting all of last year. It was really when the residents got involved. I got involved because I heard her pleas on Facebook. I listened to the gunfire. No one should have to live under that, and it's so disappointing that the people that are supposed to work for the residents did not do any sound studies, did not issue any letters to say, this is going on, we'd love to hear your feedback. It's... And so what I'm hoping, even though this is a unique situation, that maybe the county can think about changing a process when you've got a situation that overlaps many different areas of landmass, ensuring that when someone comes into the county for a permit, that people are all engaged and in support of that. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Great.
Hi, good evening. My name is KJ Pedri. I'm a resident of Superior Township, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the unhoused community and on behalf of those providing the safety net below the safety net. As Commissioner LaBar mentioned in the working session, people come to you looking for justice and accountability, and that is why I continue to show up at these meetings, and that is why I'm here tonight. The federal issues that we are encountering are an acute crisis, and they are compounding a long-term crisis of unmet needs here in the county and around the country. That is a crisis in terms of housing, in mental health services, in substance use disorder treatment, and basic medical care. By the time that you all meet again, all winter services for shelter for the county will be concluded. Daytime Warming Center has already concluded for the year, and I'd like you to reflect upon what it would be like to be outside all day today, what it would be like to sleep outside tonight. Those of us who are doing this work are not anticipating a trickle down. We are already standing in water up to our shoulders with this pouring on our heads. This... This is about life and death. This is about preserving life. Any death of someone who is unhoused is a death due to homelessness. Deaths due to homelessness are so easy to overlook. They are so easy to attribute to a medical crisis, to an overdose, to suicide. But these are deaths due to homelessness, and they are occurring here in Washtenaw County. I cannot tell you the numbers, but I can tell you their names and their faces. The Ann Arbor Daytime Warming Center struggles to find sites yearly. We are relying on our church partners, and it is inadequate. The Freight House Warming Center in Ypsilanti experiences severe antipathy from the community over the past year in particular. We are concerned for our ability to provide these resources in the upcoming year. As was noted in the COC meeting this past, this past week, we saw a greater number of people, and we saw a higher level of acuity in those receiving services over this winter. That higher level of acuity is partly due to how long some of these people have been unhoused, the years of accumulated trauma that are occurring. I have been housed myself for over 10 years, and I am still healing from my experiences, which were so much more mild than almost any that I encounter in this county. The federal cuts have caused the Engagement Center to close, which was one of our only real emergency support services. They have caused the end to the Strong Roots Family Recovery Housing. We are seeing food bank cuts from the USDA Food Assistance. And then, and then locally, as of yesterday, I'm still hearing from Arbor One tenants that they are being charged rent on condemned units. I have an unhoused gentleman who's just out of jail, who has severe dementia, who needs services. And I need you to do something. Personally, professionally, in your roles and in your communities and outside of it, because you all have more resources than I do, and I am struggling to keep people alive day in, day out. I have people calling me saying, I need food now, I need food today. I need propane to heat my tent, I'm cold. Please, please take action.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Ashley, anybody online?
We, yes, Chair, we have one individual.
Okay.
Believe their name is Sli, S or Sli perhaps?
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Sharon Lee. I live in Ypsilanti Township. I am referring to, first of all, I'd like to thank Commissioners Majewski, Somerville, and Scott for the presentation and the work session that they did. And I'm referring to the presentation. And I am going to the slide with the BOC priorities and service categories, and I'm referring to the housing. And it says, ending homelessness among older adults in Washtenaw County. Commissioner Somerville said that the homelessness is rising among adults ages 55 and up. So you have a plan to end the homelessness, but I don't see that you've had a plan once you end the homelessness to sustain the home, once they get a home. So I'd like to find out, how would you sustain them to keep that home? With the $11.5 million, do you plan on building like a senior village? Or are you going to have them, put them in already low-income housing? Because I assume that's why they homeless now, because they can't afford the housing. Because to my knowledge, and this is on the low end, about a one apartment, one-bedroom apartment is about 1,500 a month. And I assume they homeless because they're low-income, and they're probably on social security or something, and they can't afford it. So I'm just asking, do you have a plan to help them sustain that? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Any other, any other comments online, Ashley?
There's not, Chair.
Okay. At this time, it's Commissioner follow-up to public comment, and I see Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to Monica for speaking and being here to see the presentation earlier. And I shared the situation about the Senior Center in Ypsie with some of my colleagues. Just, you were so close to being done with the renovations that were funded through the ARPA funding, and then bam. So really looking forward to figuring out ways to help you all while you're displaced. And thank you to KJ who came and for all the work that you do in the community. Your comments are deeply personal to me. It took me a long time to realize that my mom didn't die from an overdose, she died while living on the streets, and that was a symptom of that. And so, you know, the points that you made are valid. I've been, you know, trying to react to a lot of the feedback in the community and give people like more of like an educational perspective, like when they provide feedback that is not supportive of the work that's being done. And so I'm trying to really open up the conversation to get people to understand the various needs. There are a lot of folks who don't understand why folks are sleeping in tents, and so I've taken a lot of time to explain to people why that's happening and the different barriers while we're all working. All nine of us are working to close the gaps. One of the things that I've been working on for almost a year is trying to identify a permanent daytime space that can be used 365 days a year. What happened a lot last summer, at least in my district, was when we had streaks of really hot weather, we needed to temporarily hotel folks that were sleeping and camping in tents, and we had some extreme weather where trees fell on tents. And so it's something that I've talked to with a number of my colleagues about the need to have 24/7 daytime space in particular. So that way, when we do have those hot streaks, people have space to kind of cool off during the day, and same thing in the winter for folks who get warm. And honestly, with the issues that you mentioned about the struggles to find space every winter in Ann Arbor, it just kind of highlights the point of trying to continue to work with some of our partners and identify space that could be permanent. That way, we're not waiting and struggling to find space. And I, you know, I think it's been really great that the Freight House has been an option, but it's not an option in the summer. And so I've always thought about that, like, what do we do? And as you mentioned, it's still, it was really rainy today, and there was not daytime space today. So that's something that, while we don't have a solution right now, and we haven't found one yet, I keep trying to find location every time I see a vacant space along a corridor where there's public transit and other services. I try to see what the cost would be to purchase or lease and how we can make that a possibility. So I appreciate you bringing in the points. And then I, I'm the person who spoke by phone. Thank you for listening. And one of the things that, and I don't know if you were on the whole time, on the housing piece in particular, it wasn't in the document, but I wanted to clarify in my comments, prevention, like especially prevention, and that can mean a lot of different things. Like there are a number of ways to make the space that an older adult's already in safer for them and more accessible for them to stay in as, as they age, but also making sure they don't become victim of foreclosure or eviction, and figuring out what the gaps are, as you mentioned, the high rents. And then on ending it, you know, there's a lot of different ways. There are a lot of great programs already, but wait lists are long. So if we have an option and a possibility to do, to work with partners on like rapid rehousing folks. But the point that you mentioned about the lack of actual affordable housing for seniors is real, which is why I'm hoping we can, well, I'm hoping what our final product will also include a small percentage that can go towards long-term housing stock, and whether it's if we decide to create a housing commission for Washtenaw County and become, you know, developers of like affordable and socialized housing, that we can focus some of our efforts on the older adult population by using, you know, just setting aside a small amount of the millage dollars to be able to match with future funding. So I appreciate the comments, and I probably didn't answer everyone, but I wanted to touch on the few that stood out to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Somerville. Commissioner LeVar?
Thanks, Chair. Forgive me, I think Commissioner KJ. I just wanted to thank you for the comments tonight, and I'll cover the COC meeting during liaison reports. But I think Commissioner Somerville said the facts of the case well in terms of a desire on this board to be helpful and a need to try and find instances and places where we can do that effectively. And I do appreciate you mentioning the COC because of the report of Katie Honer from CMH as it relates to some of the confluence of these issues with mental health. And so thank you for carving out time and coming here and for making the point about the disparity of resources between some of the people in this room or at this table and you and other advocates. It was, it was not lost on us. So thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for everybody that came to give public comment, always really helpful. Nice to see you in person finally, Wendy and Eileen. So this is an issue that the FBI Training Facility has been an issue for a really long time. You recently sent me a video pretty far away from the facility, and you can hear the gunshots, and they are consistent and it's very loud. And it is a really significant issue. The challenge with it being a FBI Training Facility is it's a, now it's a federal issue. So I've been in touch with Congresswoman Dingell's office about that. I got a response yet today, I think. So it's been referred to their district director. So now I have a specific person I can talk to about it. So I'll continue working with them on that, and then hopefully we can get some sort of sound deafening thing there, because it's, you shouldn't have to live like that, nobody should. But we're working on it, and we're going to look into if there was a permitting issue on our part and where, like you said, stuff fell through the cracks, we'll look into it on our part too. And thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Light?
I would like to thank everyone for making public comment, whether it was in person or online. As far as with the FBI gun range, I think maybe you may need to call some attention to recalling your electives, and that may bring about a change. So I would recommend maybe letting them know that if they aren't able to assist you, that maybe they shouldn't be there to work for you, because that's the job. That's their job. They were elected, and they were voted by you. And so maybe bringing up some conversation about maybe this isn't the best place for them to be if they aren't able to assist with something of this importance. So that would be my recommendation to start, or maybe to intermingle that in, and that might bring about some change. So thank you. As far as the Ypsie Senior Center, I am so disappointed that that happened. I wasn't aware that you all were closed down, and Commissioner Sanders and I were discussing maybe we could have some of our other senior centers to maybe support you all if it's just making sure that meals can come from the different senior centers to provide for those that rely. And I don't know, let's just have some more conversations about how we can try to assist you best. It's kind of disappointing, because my mother, she goes there and to do her line dancing on some of the days and exercise. So let's just have some more conversations about that. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Somerville?
Yeah, thank you. I forgot one very important comment to respond to. Thank you for mentioning Arbor One. If any constituents are watching, Legal Services held a clinic today to help tenants on a path towards filing their own cases in District Court. And there's also a clinic tomorrow from 10:30 to noon in downtown Ypsie. And for anybody who's watching this who knows somebody at Arbor One, you should not be paying rent to your landlord if you live in the city of Ypsilanti side of Arbor One. You should be escrowing your rent. I'm not an attorney, can't give you legal advice, but I can send you a frequently asked question and document from Legal Services that will explain to you the process. If you already have an active court case in District Court, you should put your rent into escrow in District Court. If you don't, you should put it into escrow at the city of Ypsilanti. Arbor One on the city of Ypsilanti side, so if you live in an apartment, they do not have a valid certificate of compliance. If you are getting emails from Beal Properties encouraging you to pay your rent, you should contact Legal Services. If you're being told that you need to pay money to move into a different Beal Property unit, not an Arbor One unit because your building's condemned, you are not required to do that. They are required to rehouse you safely, whether that's temporarily in a hotel or in a new Arbor One unit across the street. If you were moved from Arbor One Apartments on one side of La Forge across the street to a townhome, and you have some of the same issues, you can report that to Ypsilanti Township's Compliance Office. And if you need help, or you know somebody who needs help contacting them, they can call me. And if you're being harassed by Beal Properties or their management team, if they're coming to your apartment to fulfill a maintenance request, and they're trying to get you to sign a document that they typed up with your address and your name typed, and telling you that you have to sign it before the maintenance employee will leave, you do not have to sign that. Really, if you have any communication with Beal Properties Management and it seems a little off, you should contact legal aid or your local elected officials, whether it's Ypsie City Council members or your county commissioner, which is me. So yeah, I'm really sorry to all the tenants who have been deliberately manipulated in this process. There, it's not okay, but it's especially not okay when you're living in units that have already been deemed unsafe, and some of them have been condemned. I've been in and out of a number of units, and the reality is, we, people there be, we're already in vulnerable situations, and they're being even, they're even more vulnerable now. Some people might be vacating their unit once there's a red tag on it, and they come back and their belongings are gone. And so all the worst possible situations you can think of that could happen if you live in a condemned building are happening to the tenants there. So anybody watching, spread the word to anybody who you might know who has a family member or a loved one who lives at Arbor One, there are resources available. And I also want to take time to thank the Racial Equity Office. They've been out on the ground really since January, and when I, before I had surgery and wasn't able to be out there, they were still out there when I couldn't. And I, the Arbor One property in Ypsie is a majority of black residents. It is a deeply, it is an incredibly disproportionate racial issue that's happening, and I just want to highlight that. The tenants who are speaking up are telling the truth, and when you see different things being said about the good that Stuart Beal claims he's doing, every time he says something like that, he's doing three to five more things to manipulate tenants and get them to pay their rent when they should be escrowing it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other, Commissioner Light?
I would just like to say that I was able to join Commissioner Somerville at Arbor One Apartments yesterday, and the tenants there are just, they're at their, within, they don't have anymore anything to provide or to give. So for those that are watching, I'm just going to be that cheerleader. And in the background, supporting Commissioner Somerville, do not sign any document from them. You need to speak to legal aid, call your prosecutor's office, contact your commissioners. Commissioner Somerville is the commissioner for that district, but I am here for her backup if you are unable to reach her. Just know that you are not obligated, and you should not sign any documentation. That is my recommendation. I am not an attorney, but I recommend that you don't sign anything, being that there is an active, there are active issues going on. But it was just heartbreaking to try to assist the individuals that are displaced, as it took me back to when I worked in social services, and you're trying to reach for resources that you just don't have and can't provide. So I ask that the community stands up and backs up these individuals that are displaced so that we can get them housed, and so that we can bring some housing justice to the individuals that are experiencing these difficulties. um that are experiencing these difficulties um with Arbor One and with Beal Properties. Um, it is totally not acceptable. And as I always say, um, I will not tolerate this kind of treatment to any resident in Washtenaw County. Um, there are consequences to these actions to the property owners and to the property, those that manage the properties. So they should tread lightly because this is not something, um, this is something on our plate that we did not anticipate and that it is causing uh more problems with the administration that we already have. So um, I would just uh ask that we get all of the support from uh our residents in Washtenaw County. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner follow-up to public participation? Okay, um, we'll move on to liaison reports. Um, Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you Chair. All right, I think I only have one today, but I'll try to keep it long since we like to hear these. Uh, all right. So it was from the Health Department. There you go. All right. All right. So we had a number of things that came up with the Health Department. I'll start with the ones that are not so good. So of course, the federal landscape is impacting the health project uh and the funding for the Health Department. Uh, you probably saw news about a number of grants that RFK is pulling back uh that impacts us basically immediately. Uh, so as we're making some of these decisions about funding things externally, I want us to be thoughtful about making sure that we're funding our internal operations and departments well. Uh, I would love for us to not be in this, no one's saying this is happening, but I'm just saying I would love for us to make sure that everybody is in a safe position. We're not even considering having to worry about layoffs uh for any department at all. So let's just uh be thoughtful about that particularly is there's all kinds of health stuff going on right now. Uh, we had a good uh presentation about the academic Health Department Initiative that we are in partnership with U of M School of Public Health on. You can read more about that online, but it's a great uh partnership we have where our staff and students and faculty from the School of Public Health are able to work together on joint projects. So that's a good one. And oh, update, some of you have gone to the State of the Health event that has been annual. It may be moving to every other year. Um, so we'll learn more about that going forward. I'll keep you posted. Uh, if it's a funding challenge, I hope they will be able to fund it so we can do the event when we need to. And here's the good news, got to finish with good news. So our Health Department was featured on PBS NewsHour recently. Did we know that? Yeah, anybody see the episode? There's a picture. I'm going to try to show you the picture real quick. Uh, I'm not going to show you the picture. Yeah, I am. Here we go. Hammer's on me. Look at that. That's there's a mannequin interviewed. Uh, can't really see it very well. All right. Well, I'll send it to you. You can watch the episode. Uh, so the interview was about, it's been five years since the response to COVID started. So they wanted to interview uh local health departments about where are we at and how has the response been? So uh, we responded very well in Washtenaw County. There's also some good news about the firearm data. Um, so we, the recent report has shown that there's been a decrease in local firearm deaths uh from 2023 to 2024. So that's good news. And if anybody needs a gun lock in Washtenaw County, you can get it for free at a wide variety of locations, including Ann Arbor Police Department, Chelsea Police Department, EMU Police Department, Pittsfield Police Department, uh, our Health Department, the Sheriff's Office and Ypsilanti Township Law Enforcement Center and Ypsilanti Police Department.
And the Ann Arbor District Library.
And the Ann Arbor District Library. I think that one's different than this one, but good. That's what I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodge. Commissioner Labar?
Thanks Chair. Um, yeah, the the COC had its meeting and we got updates from Alpha House, from Shelter Association, uh SOS, Ozone, and then CMH in terms of uh winter sheltering. Um, as was stated earlier in public comment, uh, need is up. Uh, and I'd say acuity, intensity. Um, that is sort of across the board. There was a lot of successful sort of adaptation that these organizations uh were able to put in place this winter. Um, but it is very frankly a a question of a system that does not have enough resources to meet need. And that is compounded by the fact that we sort of have um an administration in DC that is taking actions that would uh greatly exacerbate the challenges we face. Um, and so that's the, that's the most uh um sort of dispassionate way to put it. Uh, I do think it has been helpful uh to get these reports and I do want to flag it for for this body because I would like in May to get those partners back here. Um, we keep talking about winter sheltering in the context essentially of a one-off event, but it's a one-off event that happens for, you know, four to five months every year. And so uh, I I think we can build on some of the progress made there. But unfortunately, from the COC across the board, uh, need is up at the same time that that resourcing is very down. And so um that's a less than optimistic way to end my report, but that is true. Thank you Chair.
Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Robbie?
Uh, thank you Chair. Just a quick report on Environmental Council. Um, we have a couple of things that one, one, one major thing that we did and then another thing that we discussed, but the the thing that we did was we voted on a a resolution to recommend that this body uh update our PACE um ordinance. So uh, um that is something that we, we were one of the first counties actually to allow PACE in our county for solar uh on homes as a way of basically financing those projects. Uh, a bill that I introduced when I was in the legislature would uh would have expanded that to include not just solar projects, but also weatherization uh as well as climate adaptation um uh projects for properties uh so that you could include those basically in your PACE financing. Uh, it's property, property assessed clean energy is what PACE stands for. Um, and so it basically allows the uh county to facilitate the placement of a lien on a, on a, on a property uh to facilitate then the um front loading of a company coming in and basically uh installing the panels or installing the upgrades and then you paying it off uh back to them over time. So it's not as an upfront cost to the the homeowner or the property owner. Um, at any rate, this is something that we need to update because the bill that I introduced, though it got close to passing, did not pass when I was in the State House. Uh, it then passed the legislature um last term and got adopted into law. And so now the new law is that it is expanded to all these other types of services. And so uh, one thing that uh we can do in the county is just updating our ordinance so that all these other types of programs can be included in PACE financing as well. So that was a resolution that the Environmental Council passed uh and uh to to call on us to basically pass a resolution um to update our PACE uh financing ordinance. So maybe that can come to the next meeting. Should be a pretty um pro forma administrative thing, but it does expand the program, which is uh, which is good. Uh, and then the second thing uh that was discussed is there was some concern brought up from some uh on the council about the new uh mega um um data center that's being uh contemplated for Ypsilanti Township. Uh, there's some concern about data centers generally and the noise they produce, the vibrations they produce, and then also the amount of water um and energy that they use. And so um, I think that there was some conversation on the council about finding more information about how this uh is progressing along. You know, it's a University of Michigan project. Um, and uh, so that is some, there's a subcommittee of the Environmental Council that's going to be looking into that a little bit more uh to try to get more information about who the decision makers are in the process and how this uh sort of came to be. And so that's a discussion that's probably going to happen in our next uh meeting as well. So those are my two updates.
Uh, Commissioner Somerville is asking if I'm going to talk about CJCC. I can talk about it briefly. We revamped CJCC this past Friday and had a meeting. Um, I feel like a very productive meeting with the judges, um prosecutor, DA, uh, a public defender, I guess. Um, and um, other interested parties, uh, other people on the committee. Uh, I think we aligned what our principles were and values were going forward and had a great conversation about how we can continue to support our Community Corrections Program. Um, and I really look forward to the work that committee is going to continue doing going forward. Commissioner, um, Somerville?
Thanks. I was going to give a Community Corrections update since I forgot at our last meeting. Um, yeah, so we had uh our first Community Corrections Meeting this year and our new sheriff was not there, but um, did temporarily make a decision to halt a program that would impact the way that our judges and our public defender and prosecutor could mitigate harm to to residents who could end up in jail as the alternative to not having an electronic monitor. Um, I'm really glad that um our chair called a CJCC meeting the same week that our sheriff decided to send a memo to our judges and not the Board of Commissioners. Um, because the result of that could have been pretty traumatic for people. Um, and so I just want to highlight the fact that the Community Corrections Budget continues to be an issue. Um, I've always been a strong advocate for making sure that we're not putting our residents in jail when they could have alternatives to that. Um, and I want to continue to be a good partner, but I just want to highlight for my colleagues that we quite frankly could have had a disaster happen this week. Um, had we not had a CJCC meeting on Friday and had other folks made us aware of a memo that was sent to judges without commissioner knowledge. Um, it's really important for us to remain diligent on um funding and asking for other folks involved in that process to um work with us. But I just want to highlight like how big of an issue we could have run into this week if our chair hadn't called a CJCC meeting. And as the person who oversees like sits on a body that oversees the Community Corrections Budget, the person who was going to make that decision didn't show up to that meeting to let the folks that oversee that budget know about it. So just want to make the public aware of that. It's going to be an ongoing issue of discussion and we're going to have to be creative. I know for me personally, I'm going to advocate that we maybe pass a resolution where we advocate for increased community correction support from the state of Michigan. Um, I think other um counties, you know, might think that's necessary for them as well. But I know for us, when we watched the presentation on Friday, which I've seen um more than once as um, you know, as the liaison, um we've grown what we do with our community corrections, but I think that we should be advocating for more support from Lansing as well. Um, so yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Robbie?
I I guess I have a comment slash question about what was just said.
Okay.
My understanding is that the, this is an issue that was brought to our attention previous, by the previous sheriff, uh, because there was a funding shortfall in uh the Community Corrections Budget. And my understanding of our current sheriff's action is that it was in response to the fact that there's not unlimited money to provide these types of programs and that they're just like a jail overcrowding situation. There's too many people in the jail. Uh, if you have too many people on monitors, then there's also a crisis that occurs at that time. So my understanding is that her actions were in response to the fact that she was reaching that critical point and had to um assess the viability of continuing that program forward if there wasn't. And we talked about this under the last sheriff too. You know, our Community Corrections Director came and I believe I mentioned that we need participation from the courts in this process. Judges cannot keep sending people to the tethering program indefinitely, massive volumes of people. Eventually, the program will reach its limit. And so we need everybody to work together in that system to understand that we do have limited budget and that we can't, we, everybody needs to work together to make this work. And so I think I just want to respond to what was said because I don't, I don't think the sheriff was just acting in a wanton manner. Like I think she was trying to control a situation that was about to occur. And, you know, I so I just want to make it that clear to the public too, that there's a process that's happening on her end and she's responding to that. If we want more capacity in the Community Corrections Budget, then we have to do what we did last time, which is fund the Community Corrections Budget more. I voted against that last time. Uh, because I think that there needs to be other funding sources identified for this, like was said, the state probably. Uh, but also the courts maybe should pay for it too. And I do think we should make individuals that are on the tether, if they can pay, they should pay. Not everybody can pay. But some people do can pay. They have the ability to pay and they should pay for it so that we can expand the program to more people to provide, because I I agree, you know, we don't want people to go to jail. Uh, but, you know, i- if if they can be diverted to a tethering program or other types of diversionary programs that exist as well, doesn't have to be tethered either. So there's I just want to make sure that we're having the full conversation here and not just.
I I just want to make a point of order. These are liaison reports. This isn't a discussion time for the Community Corrections Program or the CJCC. The point of these report times is for people to give a report on the committees that they went to. The information about trying to create a collaborative response is very much what happened at the CJCC meeting. The issue was there was a memo released from the sheriff's office with very little forward time for the judges, the public defender and the prosecutor to create an action plan. At that meeting, I asked that that memo be delayed um so that that we can come up with something because you are correct, Commissioner Robbie, there is not an indefinite amount of money. But to, in order to create a plan, we needed a group to come together to make that plan. I, Commissioner Sanders had her hand up to make a comment on this and then I'm just going to shut it down after that because this is liaison reports, not a discussion item on CJCC or Community Corrections right now. Commissioner Sanders?
So I just wanted to add that I was actually in attendance at that meeting and the issue is not that we have received information previous um from previous administrations in the sheriff's office. The issue is you cannot give two days' notice. We work for the government. Nothing turns on a dime like that. And to not be considerate of your judicial partners, the judges that make these decisions, the, the, the um county commissioners that have to try and uh, try and find funding for this. Two days' notice? That's ridiculous. It's, it's not something that people who are supposed to be working together. And I've, as I've said this before, we don't have to like each other. We just need to do our jobs respectfully. And that is not showing a level of respect for your partners to give two days' notice at the end of the meeting as we're about to adjourn. So I just wanted to clarify that, uh, Commissioner Robbie, that the, I understand what you're saying, but as somebody that was sitting there in the, in the peanut gallery and if I had dentures, they would have fallen out of my mouth for two days' notice, you can't do that. And it's not fair to the residents.
Okay, thank you.
It was longer notice than that. I look forward to having the discussion later.
We can have the discussion. Oh, there goes my barrette. My blood pressure's so high, my barrette's falling out of my hair. Uh, um, it, um, we can have the discussion further and clearly this is a discussion we will need to continue to have. Um, it was a, a week and a half for some, thank you very much. For some of the judges, there was no formal notification to the public defender's office and there was no formal notification to the prosecutor's office and there was no formal notification to the Board of Commissioners. We are going to discuss it later, but I am clarifying because you said something. Are there any other liaison reports at this time? Okay. Report from the county administrator.
Thank you Chair. Uh, I have a short presentation this morning, this evening. It's not morning yet. Uh, and Catherine Jones, author, will come up and provide that presentation. It's the information that you all requested related to our resource, resource management priority information. Short, so Catherine, take it away.
Sounds good. One second. Okay. Okay. Good to go. Okay, cool. Um, so yeah, I'm here tonight just in response to the BOC Priority Retreat and we were talking about resource management. Um, quick caveat, there's a lot of text on the slides. I know it's already a little bit late, so I'm going to stick really high level. Context is there in case there's any questions. I don't want any of us to sit through me reading slides to you. Well, so so we're going to quickly start out with the different information sources that the county already has, then talk through um our most recent resource, what that's looking like, some of the questions that were asked during the um priority retreat and then moving on to the next steps in information gathering. And that's where I'm really looking um from you all to make sure we're on the right track because we're going to be going to departments for information. Want to make sure we're gathering the information that you all will find valuable. So uh, information sources. Um, the first thing that we did back in 2011, um, as in response to the continuing Great Recession from '08, we began compiling mandated discretionary services. This happened from 2011 to 2015. The primary focus was to understand our mandates as we had to face another round of continued cuts and we were looking to really get. Our hands around what we were required to do, with the list of the information that we had requested from departments. Um, these were reviewed by court counsel one time in 2011 to confirm the reported level of mandate. Um, and after the board retreat, you all received the 2015 version, which was the most recent time that we had done that. Um, last year, as part of our move to program based budgeting, we did that 2024 program inventory. This started out as really focusing more on the impacts that these different program areas were targeting. That's when we're talking about equity, climate action, safe and healthy communities, good governance. The departments were provided that 2015 mandated discretionary invoice inventory, not invoice, I should say inventory, great. Um, as a tool to like kind of start the discussion and we were looking at the four-year picture, not an individual picture. Um, and as a result, departments responded to and brought different levels of detail, which I will get into in a little bit. Uh, so just a quick highlight of the key differences. The 2015 mandated discretionary services inventory was really focusing on that mandate. Some have responded with what the minimum service level was. There was not a standardization of mandate categories, we are just, it's basically all self-reported. Um, and we did have that cursory view from corp counsel. Um, and then for the revenues, it was really very detailed on what is, what type of revenue is it? Is it grants, is it fees and services, some more information around that revenue. Um, program review, we were really trying to get at a high level, that was the original intent. We had some standardized categories, we asked for performance measures, um, additional narrative. We did not say, if you said it was mandated, tell us it's mandated and how, so we don't have that to be like, yes, we are for sure, we were taking um, departments. Like good faith effort, um, but we hadn't had that reviewed. Um, and then all program and grant revenue was grouped together just to make the four-year data digestible. Um. So what ended up happening is we had a couple of different levels of detail, so. Health and OCD brought in a much more granular level of detail, um, when we reviewed this with board leadership, that was the preferred level. Um, it goes beyond just kind of a division look to what are the individual services, it matches up better when we think about mandates. Um, but it does mean that most departments haven't yet done that work to get to that level of detail. So when we get that information, we wanted to make sure we built in time to be able to do that. Um, the other piece, because it was the first time we were doing it, we didn't worry about reflecting all general fund expenses. We really wanted to focus on the departments and the things that were out there, but there are things like. Outside agencies, the humane society, doing animal control that weren't reflected because it was the first pass. So we're going to need to get that built in, um, and then that mandated information was not validated through any internal process. So that's kind of the revenue or the sources that we had coming into this. Out of that program inventory though, we did have mandates and we were able to map it to the category level budgets that we had in the organization. So it's to give us a picture, a preliminary picture of what we're looking at, especially with things that are coming at the federal level. Um, the next few slides, I took a stab at what I think you all are interested in, if you're looking at it and you're like, I wish you could show me X. I'm going to be back here in two weeks and I will be happy to show you that at that point in time. Uh, because I had a bunch of data and numbers and I thought you all did not want 25 slides of pretty charts from me, so. Um, expenditures, I want to start with this of my mandate level. From the report that we got, the large source of our expenditures are in that federal and state mandate category, that's what we would expect. Mostly we are doing the things that we are required, expected to do. Um, and then the next buckets of county policy and no mandate are um, pretty close to even best practice is a smaller um, bucket there. Um, we also see those green bars are personal services, um, so that is the largest chunk of our expenditures, again, that's what we would expect. Um, that programming bucket is everything from supplies to contracts, everything else, just trying to make it a little bit easier to read. Um, looking at the revenues that fund the different mandate levels was an interesting um, pick, it's actually pretty varied. Um, when we look at that federal state mandate, you'll see that big yellow bar, that is state Medicaid funding through CMH. Um, so it's a big chunk, not technically federal revenue tied to some things in the federal government, so thing we're watching. Um, and then that big red bar at the end is general fund dollars, so it is. Um, the second biggest funding source for mandated services is general fund dollars, it's not um, like federal, state, local grants. There's a lot of things we're required to do that aren't in the fun grant um, service provision world. Here's a um, look just specifically at federal funding. Um, one thing that stood out to me that was just really interesting is how the grant heavy departments. Looked at, I have a grant to do services, so we see health, trial court, reporting it more under the mandate and call county policy. Oh, said going more for the best practice and no mandate, it's another thing that I think if we hadn't had to take this look, I don't think we would have realized. What's happening, so in the next pass, we want to make sure we're kind of treating the similar things in similar buckets. So that we know we're really reporting out the proper um, picture to you all. Uh, and then the next chart is just a similar thing with state, this is where we're seeing the state, the CMH Medicaid funding. Um, a lot of our big programs, MIDC, childcare fund. Um, sheriff's office has community corrections rolled up in there, that's primarily community corrections there, so. Um, again, just an interesting look at what's happening and we do see on the state revenue that is mostly in the federal state mandate category. Last slide of data, um, pictures is, just took a couple of snapshots, so the mandated programs by service area. It's looking at how many of our mandated programs lie where, this is again where health and OCD being over a third of our programs. Shifts this picture, so this is one that I'm hoping once we have the same level of service or same level of detailed cross organizations, we can bring you back an updated. Um, picture, I still expect a lot of them to be in these areas, but it will shift a little. Um, and then our general fund funding, we see 66% of that is going to mandated services, 21% to county policies. And then a much smaller piece to best practice and no mandate, so we are using general fund funding for those things that we are required to do. It's quick and dirty, but that's kind of what we're seeing in the data, if there's questions or else I'll go on to the next.
I think I have one question already from Commissioner Robbie.
Yeah, I guess just a. Timely question, uh, the federal state column.
Mm-hmm.
Be interesting to know what is federal and what state of that.
And, so these ones have them broken out, federal and state separately. So the mandate is the same, but the revenue sources are broken out for which ones are funded by which. But if I'm hearing you right, you want a, on the mandate, you want a federal mandate column and you want a state mandate column?
So are, are you saying this is state, state revenue, but what's the next slide?
Um, this, and this one was federal revenue?
Okay.
And then the mandate levels are across the top, but this is where our federal funding was reported by departments to be allocated out, if that makes sense.
Got it, I was just honestly reading the chart wrong, so thank you.
Any other questions?
Happy to help them.
At this point? Okay, keep going.
Great, so. The next part's a little bit more wordier and a little bit in depth, but this is what I'm really looking for from you, for you all to give me the information that we are on the right. Um, track and with what we're going to be going to departments, um, yeah. So the first part, and I've already talked about this a couple of times, so health and OCD provided that more granular detail. Um, so looking for depart, the rest of the departments to catch up and get that um, detailed level, I think most of them, we kind of basically need to go one level below what they already provided. Um, and then adding those central budgets, um, I was trying to create a perfect definition of what a program is. And every time I tried, everyone was like, this doesn't fit, this doesn't fit, so. Better attempt was, here's a picture, we're going to try our best to walk departments through it and it kind of depends on how big your department is. What structure it is, some are going to fall better under division A where they have, they're bigger, they have some larger key service areas. Some are going to look more like those division B and division C. Right now, most departments, we really have a department and we have division A, B and C, that's the level we have, so trying to help them get to whatever the right level is. Um, health and OCD is more like that A column, um, but some departments, I'll pick on finance. You don't want each individual tiny service, that's a lot of data and we can roll them up into higher groups. So we're trying to hit it in the right, um, the right level for you all. Um, the other piece, this is why I was asking this question to Commissioner Robbie. Um, as we talked internally, there's a lot about mandates committed, contracted and how that would all flow together. It felt like keeping very concrete definitions of what a mandate is and then asking. Hey, give us the law, give us the policy, give us the best practice agency, give us that data. That's something that is easy to review, that verify, keeps it black and white. Um, and so this is keeping those same levels of mandate that we used in the previous program inventory, but again, looking to make sure. We're treating similar grants the same way, et cetera. And then the next one, we still wanted to try to get at that committed, those contracted. And we were kind of hearing a couple of different definitions of committed, one being staff involvement, we already have that with an FTE question. Um, but really trying to get at those community expectations and impact, so. Are there community expectations of the service to keep going, it's a long established service? Um, it's one that's kind of embedded in the community, it might not be mandated, but is expected. Um, how many residents are served, how long has this funding been used or the service been funded? Um, and then looking at contracted services and are anything provided through like long-term multi-year contracts, what are the dates? Again, looking at just if we have a contract, doing it kind of a little bit more information. And we're hoping that by starting with a narrative bucket, we can start to maybe see things that we could turn into categories. But right now, I couldn't come up with a category and go to a department and say, this is committed, this is contracted, this is a mandate, so. Um, wanted to kind of see what information is out there and if we need to get to those buckets, we can use that information to get there and have departments verify what kinds of buckets we might. Use once we have that. Um, and then the last step is just additional revenue information, so that's asking more of those informations of. Like are there outside revenue sources, any voter approved millages, that wasn't as much of a thing in 2015 as we have now and so. Thinking of, you know, the senior millage that we were just talking about, understanding how that would be involved. Um, asking specifically about funded and unfunded federal state mandates, um, just understanding that picture. Looking at any general fund resources that are used to leverage anything like a grant match, et cetera. Um, there's oftentimes, you know, small amount of general fund leads to a large amount of outside funding and then really. Looking at how stable that outside revenue is, so we know there's a lot happening at the federal level, what are we here, federal level? What are we hearing, kind of trying to get at what's more stable, what's less stable to anticipate what might be coming. So that is the plan of what, all of the information we're going to ask for departments. Is there anything that I'm missing, especially and all the folks that worked on resource management? Um, hoping we tried to hit everything, but.
Commissioner Labar?
Thanks Chair. Um. Catherine, I really appreciate the presentation you put forward, the, the problem with mandated services is. It quickly becomes a discussion about a defined general thing with few defined specifics. Um, and a lot of it candidly comes down to interpretation, tradition and sort of just practical reality. Um. In my mind, this is fantastic, what you can get is, is, is great. I would err on the side of getting uh, the, the largest possible big picture to us rather than getting a perfect picture in terms of detail. Um, and I'm going to say something that's going to sound flippant, but it is not intended as such. Um, as I envision this in a normal time, this would be a rubric where we could fight out amongst friends, uh, priorities and so forth. Um, and, and where we should spend limited dollars. In this current time, I am planning to use this as a tool. To argue for the primacy of human services above and beyond nearly everything else. And I'm saying it that directly because I, I don't want to surprise anybody, but I'm taking it from the notion that. If a service is mandated in a non-human services area, I, I know the, the struggle not to put something there is going to have an additional burden to it. Um, so I'm telling you that Catherine, just because uh, I, I think at the retreat, Commissioner Scott and Hodge and I. Were in a, a subgroup and this was discussed, but I know not everybody was there. Um, and I want to inform you in terms of what I, you know, how I would use this and so. Getting the minutia from every department, uh, to me, uh, what we can get in a reasonable, you know, couple of months here, great. If it's not perfect, I'm, I'm not worried, I'm trying to get a big picture so I can organize my budget thoughts, my, you know, my efforts. And I assume everybody else at this table will do something similar, that sort of thing. Um, so that's not to overshare, but that, that is exactly what I'm thinking, this detail is fantastic, I'd err on the side of, of, of big picture. And if something can have that, I'm mandated, you gotta provide for me or not.
Other comments, Administrator Dill?
No, I was just going to say if there are no comments, uh, we will take the information and uh, we'll be prepared to talk about this at, at, at all the future dates that you all deem as appropriate.
I have one more slide.
Okay.
You want, you want, I see both of you raised your hand, you want her to do her last, no, not you, okay. Do you want, you want to have her last slide before you?
I was just going to say this is exactly what we asked for, so thank you.
Yeah.
Stop now.
Last slide, just the timeline, I just wanted to be upfront about it. Um, I think, uh, Commissioner Labar, to your comments, I think that is a thing we are really taking seriously of making sure we can do it well. Making sure we're not dragged down and making it take too long. Um, given where we saw most of the departments at, we wanted to give them enough time to respond, so right now. Um, at the April 16th meeting, I'm going to be bringing, we're going to be bringing forward a budget calendar, it's going to lay out a couple of other elements, including this one. Adopting a more formal budget calendar to kind of guide the work of this year. Um, and then assuming it gets a print, we can launch that process the next day with departments. This gives them about six and a half weeks to kind of work with this data, I just want to make sure they have enough time to like think through it. Um, so that'd be May 31st, that leaves two weeks or two months for an internal review. Like for example, corp counsel, no one's looked at it for 10 years, so who knows, and I don't know how long that will take and I don't want to be like, here's. Two weeks for 400 programs, good luck, and then we walk away. Um, so we just want to make sure we have enough time with that. Um, assuming that's all done by July 31st, um, that also builds in time like if there's. Um, folks that we need to get to a different level of detail, we can make sure we're doing that. Um, that would make, give us about the month of August to prepare everything, get everything out to you all in alignment with the budget reaffirmation discussions. As we're talking through expected resources, et cetera, so all of that information would be available to you all during that time, so that's the plan that we have.
Any other questions or comments or? Commissioner Labar?
Again, putting in the context of. Informing upcoming budgets is, is helpful, um, and I would just add, uh. To me, the, the, the office doesn't have to justify its existence, the office should highlight the mandate it relies on, if that makes sense. Um, and, and so I just don't want to terrify uh, staff with my, with my earlier comments, but just trying to get a, a, a clear attachment to the mandate is, is what I'm after. But this, this, as many things you bring is, uh, is, is excellent.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, I'm, I don't, I don't want to complicate things, but I, and hopefully this doesn't, but I just, um, I want to make sure that I understand. I know we talked about this at the retreat, but I want to make sure I fully understand, why are we having this, what is the goal of this process in your mind?
Uh, I think there's multiple goals, to be frank. Um, I think a big thing is understanding our resources are tied to our mandates and other commitments throughout the. Um, county organization, really getting a sense of what we're. Working with, why we're doing what we're doing, what impact we're trying to make, I think that was already the start of the program budgeting, this is just adding. Extra detail around the mandate, I think if there are resource constraints in the future, it becomes a tool. I think if there are resource constraints in the future, it becomes a tool again of understanding what's happening. Um, it's better information to do when we're not in those spaces. So I think it can be both things.
Commissioner Hodge? Oh, sorry.
No, I had a couple of, I mean, so I would guess, building off of that. So I, I hear all the words you're saying and I'm trying to imagine like what, what the, what the pro, what the purpose or product is. I mean, is, how is it going to be incorporated in the budget? Is it just purely like informational for us to like be able to guide our decision-making? I guess my concern being like, obviously you showed that OCD is a lot of basically discretionary, you know? How does that help us with this? Like we care about what OCD does. How does it help us with decision-making? To necessarily just have that type of a breakdown. Um, I'm just kind of generally curious about that. Something that maybe some of my colleagues are suited to answer as well. Uh, but then I, I guess also I'm wondering too, in terms of definitions. I'm relooking at the slides. You're trying to remember what you said, but in terms of a mandated service. What are, so like a grant that we get, that we've opted to receive a grant and there's mandated provisions within the grant that we. In order to get the grant, we have to provide. Is that a mandate?
That's a solid question that I realized had been interpreted differently as I prepared this presentation. So I think that's one that is the kind of thing that we would need to provide guidance to departments on what makes sense. My, I think there are multiple ways that we end up with those grants. So there are grants that's like, this money is available. If you guys don't go after it, somebody else is going to go after it.
Competitive grants.
Right, competitive grant. You've signed a contract, you're doing it. You're right that this doesn't fit neatly and maybe we need a new category for that. I will fully own on that front. There are other ones using MIDC, for example, at the public defender's office. There was a state mandate and it came with, here is the way we're going to fund it. And so that is a, those are technically different. You could argue. Um, and so that's where this state mandate that fits neatly into a bucket childcare fund, I would think would be a similar situation. So I think that's fair feedback. And it's one that again, as I'm putting together the chart, I looked at it and was like, well, that was unexpected. I was thinking they'd be like, we get the grant money as a mandate. And so knowing that there's that different interpretation, how we want to reflect that. Is available day, so.
I feel like it's, yeah, I think it is a different category to me. I mean, it's sort of, because a state mandate has a different. Connotation for me than like, we've opted for a grant that we then have to fulfill the provisions of. Um, and, and getting back to my earlier comment too, I do think that it would be helpful to see, I know you have that one chart where it was separated federal state. But I almost think it should be listed as a different category in a different column to say. I mean, even seeing it in the same chart, I think would be helpful. These are the federal, federal level mandate versus like grant fulfillment. And then state level mandate grant fulfillment. So, so that, and then my last question is about mandated services. And I, you know, I'm, you know me and animal control, right? I mean, it's like, every time I see that, my ears perk up. But, um, the, how are you considering a contract like that, for example? Okay, it's $2 million contract. Is that a mandated service? Is all $2 million mandated? How are you considering it in your calculations? Loaded question. Oh, boy.
Those are the things we're figuring out is why I asked for four months to do this work is really my answer, but.
I have a, I have a whole queue. Um, I'm just going to respond a little bit ahead of time too. Because this is definitely something I've asked finance to do, um, and to try to help. One is that, so we have a better control and understanding of where, what our budget. What we have to do with the budget and aligning expectations also outside of this organization with the work that we do. It will also help inform us at the board table as we go forward too. So I think this is really helpful as we have all the threats coming to funding, um, as we go forward for the next four years. I wasn't at the last board meeting because of this vertigo issue, which full disclosure, I'm having a little of right now. Why I'm not looking around very much. But it, we had, um, $7 million of grants that we approved at the last meeting. And my concern is if that money gets pulled back, like what do we do? Where can we go? And so in some ways, it's just kind of understanding all those buckets of money. I think that so, at some point, there's a discussion we have at this table about our own principles of what we think. Like Commissioner Labar, I would look at him, but I might get dizzy, um, has said that, you know, he, yeah. Has said that he values health and human services. I'm not going to argue that. I do too. But we are a body of nine. And so it is just if we can have this information to inform a larger discussion as we go forward. With budgets over the next however many times, I think that's hel- helpful. And I think it helps to align expectations. I have asked Catherine, like if somebody says this is a mandate, I've been like, well, show me. Like where is it in the MCL? Like where, show me where that is. So I would say to your question on animal control, I've talked about, we have a, there is a mandated amount of services that have to be. And then sometimes we think of things as like, like you've put it on there, like our values. Or like what are the morals that have come from the board table as a whole, you know? Obviously not, we all have differences individually, but when things have been voted on as a whole, that kind of shows something. So I have asked sort of to kind of delineate those things so we can understand those things going forward too.
Really quickly, I think it's really important that, again, picking on the animal control contract, within a contract. You know, we're spending $2 million. What of that is mandated and not mandated? We've decided to spend that money, but what's mandated? And I think we need to, that needs to be broken out for all of our contracts, unfortunately. I mean, that's a ton of work. But I, I think we need to understand that. So I hundred percent agree with you Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hodge and then Labar.
I won't, I thank you. I won't add much more because you said largely what I wanted to say too. That a lot of this came out of the conversation from the retreat. Uh, and we were in the, like Chair Scott and Commissioner Labar and I were in the resource management. Subgroup towards the end and we asked for something like this because we were having conversations about. In the event that the worst happens related to external funding, what do we have to fund that is exactly mandated? And then looking at our mandated services, what could we fund that's mandated but funded more so we can do more? Like we want to go beyond some cases, funding just the bare minimum of the mandate and then thinking about where the other resources are. Chair Scott covered everything else and I'm losing my voice, so I'm going to stop you.
Thank you. Commissioner Labar.
Yeah, thanks Chair. And, and use if, uh, it doesn't surprise you brought up animal control. I think part of what is, is helpful in the context of the budget coming up is delineating. What of animal control is truly mandated? What is the basement we have to default to legally? And in that instance, as you well know, you know, basically you house a dog for 10 days or something, then you can shoot it and you got no issue with cats. And I know if you are quote, an aggressive cat person, um, I res- I respect that. My hope is that that tool will help us sort of argue out our, our, our budget as best we can, but also have that. Have that codified data point to point back to so that when we talk about mandate, we're saying like, I mean, the bare minimum. Or I mean, the bare minimum, but I'm also, I'm going to throw in that we should maintain 20 years of, whatever, that sort of thing. So I, I really appreciate it. I'll, I'll stop talking. Thanks.
I mean, one of those issues is also what came up earlier. Like we have a responsibility to have a jail and run a jail. We don't have a responsibility to run. A community corrections, a tether program, right? Like, so there's a moral or value. That we put on something by saying like, this is an important thing to us. And so, no, there's nothing to say that as the board of commissioners. We have to give a million dollars towards this program. We do, because we find it valuable. But that's the type of conversation I want us to be able to really understand those things going forward. Any other questions or comments on this item? Can't look out my right eye. Thank you. Uh, Catherine, uh, uh, Tina, all of finance, I want to say thank you. This is a huge thing that, um, you're being asked to do and you're doing it beautifully. Thank you. I'm going to go back to Administrator Dill.
I just want to say that concludes my report.
Fantastic. Great. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the report from me. I have no report for you tonight. Let's move on. Special order of business. Would somebody like to move this resolution to set a public hearing? All right. Um, uh, there's no discussion on this, just setting the public hearing and it's a roll call vote. Ashlyn?
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Matjeski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Great. Uh, next item is the appointments. Would somebody like to move the appointments? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, this is also a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Matjeski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Appointments passed.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, the consent agenda. Um, and would anybody like to move the consent agenda? Uh, any discussion? A question? Uh, Commissioner Light?
Uh, I move that we remove on the consent agenda number six of the. Report of the treasurer that it be moved, uh, moved to the regular agenda. And also, uh, to be, that report to be provided by our county treasurer.
That, that item on the consent agenda is part of the board rules. So that will have to be amended by board rule.
To the regular.
For, for today?
Okay, let me read it. Yeah, I move that item number six on the consent agenda of the treasurer's report. Be moved to the regular agenda of our next board meeting and be reported by our county treasurer.
Yeah. What, what I'm hearing is that there's nothing to move, which is right, because there's nothing in the consent agenda. There's no report of the treasurer in our consent agenda.
Ma'am.
Yep.
It says on item number six is a report of, uh, of the treasurer.
There is no report included with our agenda. If you look in the consent agenda, communications and contracts, there's no report submitted.
Why is it on there?
Cause it's part of the board rules, the standing item.
But it used to be on the regular agenda and not in the consent agenda so that the treasurer is able to provide the report, um, in any meeting without having to.
I think it's, I think it's always been on the consent agenda. And then the treasurer would submit a report. And if the treasurer wanted to talk to that submitted report, that's fine. The idea of the consent agenda is that one of the rules for the consent agenda is that. All the documentation associated with items contained in the consent agenda template are distributed to meeting participants before the meeting. So we have the opportunity to be informed voters on the group of them. So there's, the treasurer did not actually submit a report for this meeting. There was a. And so. There's nothing to move to the next meeting because there's no report submitted. If the treasurer wants to submit a report for the next meeting, for it to be on the consent agenda, it, there, there it is. And there's something to speak to, but as of right now, there's nothing to speak to.
Well, the treasurer submitted a report and a resolution, uh, and so I'm not sure what happened to it. However, um. That, well, that's what I was pertaining, that's what I was commenting on because there was a, um, report and a resolution. And that's why the treasurer was here in attendance and left. And so.
There's no report in the agenda online.
Not on the agenda, but well, the treasurer submitted a report. And a resolution. And it's. This is a similar situation to. Community township. It's not, so there was one submitted. And the treasurer is not given the opportunity to make that report, but it was submitted and along with a resolution.
I did not get a report submitted for this meeting from the treasurer.
It didn't go to board leadership?
There's a discussion on a resolution that did not move forward, but there was no formal report submitted.
The treasurer always, our current treasurer always had a report and did not have to and was able to present that report.
Those reports were submitted in writing before the meeting. Commissioner Sanders?
So if they submit a report. Leadership can choose to stifle it? If they don't.
There was no report submitted.
I'm asking the question, I'm asking. If a report is submitted to leadership. And leadership does not agree with what is reported out. You can stifle the report? That's a question.
I, no, but this is an item on the agenda, reported the treasurer. It would not be stifled. It would be a report from the treasurer. It is on the agenda. The treasurer is more than welcome to submit a report from the treasurer. I understand the treasurer was here this evening and wanted to talk to us. The problem was is there's no report to speak to on the consent agenda that was there. The treasurer was offered an opportunity to speak under the administrator's report. She declined that. I was not interested in stifling anybody's voice and found a time for her to speak and it was declined.
I was, was, was the treasurer offered to speak or was somebody offered to speak for her?
I, I will defer to Administrator Dill. I think you had the conversation with her.
I don't speak for the treasurer.
Thank you for the clarity. Commissioner Somerville?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Cause I, I feel like we've never had this happen. Um, so I just want to make sure I know what you're saying. If there's not a report pre-submitted, they can't speak under the consent portion of our meeting?
No, it's the Roberts rules are.
Okay.
They're about.
I just wanted to make it clear for like, just myself.
Yeah, the consent agenda is meant to be something that makes the meeting, the business of the meeting go faster and advance the, the business that needs to be discussed.
No, I just wanted to clarify for the record, um, just to ask questions about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Robbie?
Just a point of order. Did the consent agenda get properly moved and supported?
Yeah, I asked for discussion after it was moved and supported. Okay. All right, the consent agenda, who knew would be. Controversial. That's a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I had some opposition, but the ayes seemed like they had it. Uh, next item on the agenda is the. First reading, uh, resolutions. Uh, anybody like to move those? Commissioner Labar?
Sure. Resolutions, first reading, A, a resolution ratify the application of a grant application to the United States Federal Emergency Management Administration. B, a resolution approving the final recommendations of award recipients for new human pers- new human partnership mini grants. Uh, and then that is it for first reading.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Robbie?
Thank you Chair. Um, I do have a series of questions for item B.
Okay.
But no questions for item A.
All right. Anybody got A? We'll try to go in order. Commissioner Somerville?
I just wanted to provide a comment. I'm really glad to see this on our agenda.
Yeah, so. Me too.
I guess I did have a question on item A too. I guess I did have a question on item A too.
Okay, all right. What's your question?
Is, is FEMA still an agency?
With that, I, I actually, I had that very question with my, with my mom, I think, yesterday. Um, let's get back to you on that one at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah. Uh, okay.
Okay.
Should I move to item B?
Yeah, can we move to, any other questions on A? Barring the existential crisis FEMA is having. Uh, item B? Go ahead, Commissioner Robbie.
Great. Um, okay, so I think my concerns with this are probably pretty well, um, understood, given my previous comments during working session, but uh, I, I think generally speaking, I've got, you know, somewhat of an issue with, um, the county spending these dollars on nonprofit funds rather than county services. Uh, but if I can get past that, uh, and we are going to give this money out, um, I do have some questions about the specific programs that are being funded. Uh, and I had this conversation with Tony earlier today, but, um, before I'm willing to vote yes on this, I need to see from each of these agencies that we're funding, how they are going to be recognizing the county's contribution to their nonprofit or the services that they're providing. Uh, and so I've highlighted a few services that the county will be funding. For the WISD, we're funding, uh, seven weekly training workshops for parents and caregivers of Washtenaw County children. I think it would be appropriate for, at the beginning of those training workshops, the attendees to be notified that these workshops are paid for by the taxpayers of Washtenaw County. Uh, we're funding ground cover news to help pay the vendors more money. I think it would be appropriate to have in each of the ground cover newspapers, a county logo that says proudly supported by the taxpayers of Washtenaw County. Things like that. Um, and I think that there's opportunities throughout this for the county to be recognized for its contribution, however big or small. Uh, but we are funding specific programs. I'm glad to see that there's specific programming that is being funded and we can sort of like say, okay, this forty thousand dollars is going to this program. But in doing that, I want there to be recognition of the county's contribution for the people that are accessing those services. So, Tony, do you want to respond to that at all?
So in 2024, OCED worked in collaboration with corporate council to be able to put together language as an addendum to all of contracts that are issued through OCED for grant funding, uh, to mandate acknowledgement of county funding, um, that they have received for that particular program or service. Uh, and then you and I had the conversation today, uh, for future grant applications that there was also a desire, uh, on your part to be able to see in the application itself how the applicant would propose that they would publicize, uh, said grant acknowledgement.
Yeah, and then, so thank you for doing that work. I think, like I said, hopefully we can get that information in two weeks by our next meeting. Uh, and, uh, that will make me more comfortable to support this. Um, and I think that should be standard practice for all of our, I, I know that you, I appreciate that you guys did work to write in that acknowledgement has to happen. And I think taking that one step further, like we talked about and saying, not only do you have to say, yes, we're going to acknowledge, but also how you're going to acknowledge. I think building that into the grant for the RFP process is important and can be a model for other parts of the organization too. So excited to hear that you're on board with that and I look forward to hearing from each of the organizations what they plan to do, um, to make sure that those that are accessing the services understand that they're receiving a county-paid-for service. Um, so thank you. And then I have a specific question about one of the programs, uh, the University of Michigan, uh, Program for Multicultural Health. Is that, does that program still exist?
Nicole made a contact with them today.
Okay.
I did. I reached out to two different representatives at University of Michigan, um, because the, the person that actually did the RFP is out on maternity leave for a few months, but I spoke to two other people and they assured me that, um, this application falls under a different umbrella than the DEI program. So thank you for, actually, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention because that was not on my radar.
No worries. Uh, okay, that's good to hear. Um, I have really mixed feelings about this item because I am very pissed off at the University of Michigan for what they did. And I am, uh, even more mad that the county is, I mean, I'm not mad at this. I know that, how the university works. I know that there's like subdivisions of the university and they're trying to fund a specific program here, but I don't think it's appropriate for the university that just stopped spending a quarter billion dollars on DEI to now be turning around and getting a forty thousand dollar grant from the county, uh, when they have the money to fund this per, they have the money to fund this program and then some. And I think it's inappropriate for us to be allocating this money to a University of Michigan program. At the same time, I have mixed feelings about it because is the university going to give money to this program? And so I guess, um, uh, my gut on it is like, is there a program at, at EMU that is not, that's DEI program that does something similar to this? Is there a program, are there other programs that maybe, because this looks like it's in Lincoln School District and Park Ridge and it's a University of Michigan program? I, I guess I'm just wondering, are there programs that Eastern runs or, or other programs that we could fund that fulfill the same needs? I just am like really conflicted about giving the University of Michigan money when they have the money to fund these programs.
If the commissioners, it's certainly under your purview. These are the recommendations from the community reviewers. The final decisions are made by the Board of Commissioners on who the funding goes to. We do keep track of all the scoring, so we do know who the next ranking nonprofit organization, uh, would be if one would be pulled from consideration.
Okay, I'll stop talking because there's other hands up.
And just to say, EMU did not apply, uh, for a grant.
Okay.
Um, I, I've got Somerville, Labar, and then Ha- oh, was, you guys know the order because you know I'm not looking around. The, Somerville? Did you have your hand up first?
No, you go, then he'll go.
Somerville, Labar.
Sorry.
Beaman, Hodge.
My bad. Um.
Oh, and Light, okay. Somerville, Labar.
I guess I'm just curious, um, should there be a motion to amend the resolution to require that the awardees provide, um, information to users of the program that they're getting funding from the county? I feel like that's what we should do. If that's what we, like, if a majority of the board wants to do that, I just think it's appropriate. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there. I, I guess I would just prefer that we like make motions instead of telling staff to do something between meetings just because it, you know, it just makes, it's, makes more sense. Um, and I support that, like, I do think that organizations should share with the users who's helping, you know, I think in most cases partially fund, um, I think it's appropriate. And also I think just like, and maybe this is something that could be voluntary, but I think we should offer the organizations that we're providing mini grants to an opportunity to come before the board and share how the funds helped propel the support, especially, um, you know, I understand some of the comments made about the University of Michigan decision they made, but I know the employees that do the work and I know some of the kids that benefit from the work. And so I think like, I'm frustrated with decisions that were made by a university in our county as well. And I'm glad that my, the university that I graduated fa- um, from is continuing to, um, uplift DEI work. Um, but I think maybe that could help connect all nine of us to the actual people who are getting the support from us rather than attaching it to the entity. Um, because it's really the staff that are, are providing the service, not the University of Michigan. Um, and so I think there might be one way to look at it differently. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Labar?
Um, eh, eh, two things. One, just useful to remember. This process was born out of the analysis we did in 2020 in terms of how to make some of these funding questions more equitable, uh, and specifically more informed by, uh, grassroots groups and participation. And so to some degree, it's, it's bad timing because it's a process that was started five years ago that is coming to fruition. At the same time, uh, as has been mentioned, the university, uh, you know, made what I think is a poor choice and I think others feel that way too. To Commissioner Robbie's point and Commissioner Somerville's point, um, we should have a template that we tell them to use in terms of recognizing it's, it's county funding, but not incur any cost on their end because at forty thousand dollars candidly, if, if, if we get too cute on that, I, I worry it becomes more hassle than it's worth. Uh, if we can do that as just part of the contract, great. Um, if we move forward with this, uh, tonight, uh, maybe we can do that going forward. Uh, point heard. Good point. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Com- uh, Commissioner Labar. Ooh, names are hard sometimes. Commissioner Beaman?
Thank you, Chair. I, you know, I want to uplift what Commissioner Somerville spoke to, which is we can look at a university and decisions that were made, but we also need to think about the students in the community within the university that's impacted by decisions that they didn't get to make themselves. Um, but just to, for the record, um, the university is committed to maintaining vital student spaces, including the Trotter Multicultural Center, the Spectrum Center, and other various multicultural spaces across campus. So while it's not ideal, there is, um, a public statement on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Beaman. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you. I want to respond to two things that Commissioner Robbie said that, uh, one of them is a reminder that we had had some interest in developing a policy that touches on what Commissioner Labar said about how do, um, how does support from the county get recognized? I think we need to create a formal policy around this. It doesn't a discussion topic every time. I'd be happy to work on that with you because I know you have some interest in it and point in that, Commissioner Robbie, or anybody else, but I know that people have interest in that. The other piece on this one is similar to Commissioner Somerville's comment about this is a, a grant that would go to the University of Michigan and I am displeased by their decision as well. Uh, but then you look at it and you look at the communities that are served and the community partners that are being served, that's, I think there's a tension there that I'm struggling with because, I mean, one of the organizations is in my district and I know it's, um, some of my residents that get served by the program. But then the other piece is that the dollars are going through the University of Michigan and there should be some, I think, consequence for actions that if we agree philosophically or disagree with philosophically, with, that there's a tension there. I mean, maybe there are other ways we could directly support the organization instead of passing it through. Uh, but I gotta, I have to mull that one for a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Light?
I, uh, would like to ask for, with the University of Michigan Program for the Multicultural Health, is there a youth camp? Um, because my son, uh, had, we had applied for, um, a camp that will go on this summer and will provide them the opportunity, um, after graduation to be able to attend the university. However, uh, after the whole DEI shindig, um, my feelings have changed and I was just wondering, is that a program, um, that falls under this umbrella? I can't find, I was looking for the email to find the exact name. Um, so I, you're not sure?
I could look into it. I'm not sure about.
Um, but I also, uh, as the other commissioners mentioned, I am, um, saddened that the University of Michigan decided, um, that they would no longer support DEI. And I just, I have a hard time, um, swallowing the pill to provide funding to anyone who does not want to, um, participate, uh, in something that is, uh, much needed. So that's just my take on that. Um, the next item that I wanted to move to was the, uh, for SOS Community Services. Um, I just want to make sure, uh, that we are holding SOS accountable, um, and that they are doing the work. Um, I still receive calls from residents that they are not being provided, um, or being treated, uh, with any kind of dignity. And it's upsetting, uh, that they are still, uh, individuals that are not receiving the services or the proper services or being pushed aside or saying that we cannot help you. What is the, the funding? Um, any of the funding that the county provides, what is it for? Uh, and you know, I, I just can't understand that they continue to receive funding and our residents are not being assisted. And so I have a problem with providing any kind of funny funding, whether it be forty thousand, which is a mini grant, or forty cents. It's not, it's just not fair and I, I just don't feel comfortable with to continue to provide funding to an organization that are not providing the services that they are supposed to provide. And we continue to still have to, I feel like the county is doing the job of this organization that we are providing the funding for them to make sure that our residents receive the accommodations that they need. So I just want some, I, I need some accountability. I need some data and I need some information on what they're doing because I see nothing.
Commissioner, uh, Robbie?
I'm rewriting my motion, but I, I wrote out a motion for the, um, one piece, but before I get to the motion, I just had a thought, I guess, um, I, and my thought has changed a little bit since Commissioner, uh, Light said what, what she did. I'm really conflicted about this U of M piece and I almost, part of me feels like we should, it should be considered separately or pulled out to be reevaluated. Uh, further, um, one potential middle path is to say, give them the money, but give it with a statement that we sent to the Board of Regents, basically saying, hey, look at us, we're giving this money to your university for this program, but we're really mad at you for doing what you did. And we, and we need you to basically, because the other thing is here, you know, I've actually talked to several regions over the last couple of days and one of the things that we should all be aware of is their budget process is coming up this June. And that was a quarter billion dollars that they spent on DEI that I don't know what's going to happen to that money. And the community and the state and all of us that care about this issue need to make sure that they spend that quarter billion dollars again on DEI-type programs, whether it's scholarships, whether it's, you know, whatever it is, they need, and more, they need to spend more than that, actually. And so I don't know if there's a way to like craft that into like, yeah, we'll give you the money, but like, one, don't ask for this again because like, you guys need to fund this program.
Hmm.
And you guys need to make sure that this is, this is nothing. This is less than a rounding error in the university's budget. And in the grand scheme of two hundred and fifty million dollars, and the more that they should be spending, like, this, this is, they should be funding this five times more than what we're funding it, um, to do these types of programs. So I don't know if we can like include some kind of a, a statement since this is an extraordinary circumstance, but just, there's a thought that I have, but I think I'm more aligned with what Commissioner Light was saying, just, so, just a thought.
Commissioner Beaman?
I just wanted to add a clarifying point that this program is through the hospital and not the school. So just so we know, it's Michigan medicine and not the school. So I know there was a question about admissions and all of that.
Um, I, I will say one thing about the, I, I did not, I'm, I looked at the grant application. I didn't see that, so maybe I just missed that. We all know I'm having problems focusing right now. Um, but, but I will say, I, I feel the, the conflict a little bit because, um, I too am profoundly disappointed at the way the university, um, handled, um, I'm not, I'm just going to say it, handled fascism in our, in our midst. Um, and so that's really disappointing to me. The problem is, is that like this program, um, I, like, is, when you look at the grant application and read through it, it serves oh, n- over ninety or ninety-ish predominantly African-American youth from marginalized communities through four centers in Ann Arbor and IPSE. And to me, one of the things that makes me think, I, I want to make sure I keep funding it. Yes, the university should fund it, but I want to make sure I keep funding this because, um, the quotes from the participants were really moving. I mean, the participant who said, I really liked that you helped me apply for scholarships to afford college. I mean, that's worth every penny of grant funding that we give. I mean, that's worth every penny of grant funding that we give to this. I do know that it is, I didn't know it was through the hospital. I see a lot of like MPH through public health. Public health isn't funded well anywhere through the university or not, so. So I understand the conflict with feeling annoyed about the university. But this program, just those, just if you've got Board Portal open, can you believe I'm saying it? I can never get on Board Portal, that's why it's kind of a joke. Or the agenda open. Just go back and look at those quotes from the, the, what the participants say and I feel like that's really, it's very moving, but I think it's maybe a question for us to consider as we go forward about some of these things. I do have a question. I don't know, Corp Counsel, if you're gonna know the answer to this or not. Okay, thank you. What happens to our grants if we give these grants out and the University of Michigan Program for Multicultural Health shuts down? If you didn't hear, because now I have a, that's all right, I have experience from listening to the meeting last time online. If you're not talking into a microphone, people at home cannot hear you. So he said it's contract specific, so that's, that's a real lawyer answer. Thank you. Corporation Counsel for not letting me down.
And the contracts are specific, our NHSP contracts are specific to the program that they made the application on the RFP too. So it couldn't be moved to another department's funding.
That's helpful. I like that. Commissioner Robbie?
I have a draft amendment to the resolution.
Okay, let's hear it.
So it would add a, two resolve clauses. First resolve clause, be it further resolved that each organization that is receiving county funds shall provide to each end user of any payment service or other program funded by the county, a statement of recognition that the service is being funded by the people of Washtenaw County. And be it further resolved that each organization shall provide the county Board of Commissioners with the form and format in which this information will be provided to the end user prior to the fund being appropriated to each organization.
Okay, any discussion on those two clauses? Commissioner Hodge and then Labar?
You had me at the first one. The second one seems like it might be pretty onerous for some of the smaller organizations. So I would wonder if we could find a way, to the point earlier, for some of the grants, like it it would be not worth it for some of the other organizations. It's gonna create a lot of challenge with no experience for it. The Commissioner Labar's point earlier, if we could provide them like a sample or a template that that may make that work.
I think, if I may, I think the my, the first one is actually already being done. The second one is the one that's more important to me because I I want to know how they're actually gonna show the people that are receiving the services that the county is funding those services. That's, that's what's most important to me here. So like, I want, I want to hear from them how they're planning to do that. I don't, I don't necessarily think it's reasonable for us to tell them how they have to do it. I'm open to doing that. I just don't know that we have the time to like draft that here. That maybe something is for our next meeting, but like again, like Ground Cover News is a prime example, like if for the period of time that this forty thousand dollar grant covers, that they're gonna be paying their vendors more, there should be a note in the Ground Cover News that it is something that the county is supporting. And I would like to see what each of these organizations, like these Washtenaw Camp placement. This is sixty-five to eighty youth that are getting placed in a camp thanks to county funding. I want those sixty-five to eighty youths' families to know that their kids are going to this program because the county is funding this. So I would like that this, the intent of this be further resolved is to say, tell us how you're gonna tell people that are receiving the service that they're getting served by people of Washtenaw County.
Thank you Chair. I'm just wondering, since this is first reading, if maybe it could come back to us with revised, proper language, maybe Corp Counsel if needed in terms of any legality around it, but that's just what I'm wondering since this is first reading.
I can.
No comment from the lawyer, another very lawyerly comment.
I can, I can be okay with that as long I'll provide my notes to Corp Counsel and if we can get a, a draft, well, I think if we pass it tonight, we'll have to get a draft of an amendment that we then pass at our next meeting.
I see that our Director of OCD, Tony Kayumi, may have something to say on this.
And we have some examples that we have shared with nonprofit organizations that are cost-free to them. That are simple to give them ideas of what they could do, whether that is putting it on their website, whether that is issuing a press release, announcing the grant that they received, whether it's at their events, making the announcement that, you know, that we are a supporter of that organization. So we have a list of things that could be provided to them that should be very cost-effective and and easy for them to make choices doing if they need help.
Commissioner Labar?
Thanks Chair. Even something as simple as, as the union bug, if it was something like that, just said paid for in part by Washtenaw County. Commissioner Robbie though, to to the language in the first part of it, I just want to be clear. You said paid for in in part by Washtenaw County residents or the people of Washtenaw County?
That's just my draft of the people of Washtenaw County, if you want to say taxpayers or whatever you guys want to say.
To the, to the sentiment behind the point you've made and and that we're addressing now, I would be, I'd be explicit that they can attach it to Washtenaw County government. The the notion being there that it's, that it's some, you know, form of local body that they, again, can yell at. So I, if if you're open to that, that'd be fantastic. I'm happy to be supportive.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, so I will say a hundred percent support that. I was just drafting on the fly here. I think that, I appreciate your comments, Tony. However, I do think that my, my vision here is that the, the individual act like, I mean, so many of these are like great on-the-ground services that people are accessing. The stuff for SOS is support for families with groceries, utility assistance, eviction prevention. When they get that check from SOS, I want that check to say, you're getting this money because Washtenaw County. I want the end user to, like, I don't want them to have to go online and be like, oh, SOS got this money from. I want the end user to be able to see Washtenaw County is paying for this.
Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you. All right. I was responding to your earlier point, but the second, the second clause there. And I think, would it be sufficient then if when they do their grant reporting and that, they describe how they did what we asked them to do?
I mean, no, I, for me, like, if I'm gonna vote yes on this, I need to know exactly how each of these nonprofits is gonna tell the people that are receiving the services that they are receiving services because Washtenaw County is paying for, giving them this grant.
Well, so you want that on the front end?
I want it on the front end, yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question on your grant? I'm abusing my chair position to, to dump into the conversation. You know, I have firm belief in Robert's rules that the chair waits to the end. But my question is, is, these are, this sounds like a new requirement. Would you be open to say this is a requirement going forward and it's part of the grant application? That they have a question on how they will let people know that in part this has been provided by, by Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners?
I, I am open to that being the case, but in order for me to vote for these, I need to, I need, it, it shouldn't be that onerous because we've already required in each of these contracts that they have to provide this information to. But, so I want to know from each of them how they're planning to implement that part of the contract. And before I can vote on this, I need, I want to know how they are gonna do that. So I appreciate it, Commissioner Somerville's comment that it should be a motion, which is why I made the motion I did. And I don't think it's that onerous to, I mean, because I don't want, I, when somebody gets a check for groceries from SOS Community Services, they should know that they're getting that check because the county has funded that. But I don't think that's too much to ask for. And so I, I guess, I am open to Commissioner Beeman's suggestion that we withdraw this discussion for now and that we draft something that reflects this in a different format and that we have an amendment at our next meeting. I'm open to that, but I, I also unfortunately, I would like to see that information before we vote on this at the next meeting too, so.
Commissioner Beeman?
So I have a question for you. Because I work a lot with donor relations and communications. And so my question is, are we the only funder of these programs? Because to Commissioner Robbie's point, if this is funding SOS, but it's forty from us and twenty from them and ten from them, that's like seven logos to put on a check. So that's my question and you don't have to have the answer now if you want to come back with it, that's okay. But if we aren't the sole provider of the service, if we are just sponsoring at a specific level, meaning half of the program or something.
And in a lot of grant applications, we are not the one hundred percent funder of the program or service. We could be a partial funder. Other times, sometimes we are the only funder, so it differs from application to application.
Commissioner Robbie, am I right in thinking you like something like, you all know me, I'm a real dork. Is this, you're asking for something like when I watch PBS? And it says funded in part by, you know, and then at the end it says, and viewers like you. That's what you're looking for, something like that. Okay, just clarifying. Commissioner Light?
Not only do I think it would be a good idea to have that little ending part, Commissioner Robbie, but I would like to know for the Board of Commissioners and more so of what are you doing with these funds? And how are you helping? So my ask, not only to make sure that it's known that we are, we are providing funding, but what I want to know, what are you doing with the funding? Because I'm not seeing the results and I want to know. And a, a, an annual report or I, I need more reporting from specific organizations because the, the end of the year or annual report is not working for me because I'm not seeing the results throughout the year. And I, I just am not comfortable with to continue to provide funding and we don't see the results. So not only are they not saying that Washtenaw County is providing funding, but they're not telling us what they're doing and we're not seeing the results. So if, if we could get, and I don't know, Commissioner Robbie, are you able to, I don't know, to, to put that in there some kind of way? Because I want to see it.
As part of their grant reporting process related to NHSP grants, they have to do follow-up grant reports. And that goes through PEG, who was chosen to be sort of the moderator of these grants. And they report out every year and there's a compilation of that from PEG. We can certainly share those with the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, I would like the, the, it, it just doesn't seem like it's matching up. So that's, that's the issue. The, the reporting is not, is not matching up with reality. And so that's why I just, they need to be held accountable if they're gonna receive a penny from us because it's not adding up. Math isn't mathing. And my comprehension skills are impeccable. I used to be an English and reading teacher, so I, I know that I'm reading correctly and I'm seeing the numbers and it is just not adding up.
Commissioner Robbie?
Thank you.
I'm just a reminder, we're speaking to the amendment still.
Yeah, yep. This is relevant to both what Commissioner Light said and to what Tony said, but I, I agree with Commissioner Light's comments a hundred percent. And to my, to my motion and your comments, Tony, that we're not the sole funder for a lot of these. We're the sole funder of some of them, maybe not all of them. And to Commissioner Light's comment, I think it would be helpful to know, well, one, I mean, these descriptions have some description and some sort of very concrete programs that are associated with the funding that they're asking for, right? And so like, I appreciate that. I appreciate that they have a very, like, Women's Center. We're gonna give one-on-one sessions with therapists that will then connect people to other agencies, services, you know, that their therapists will connect them. That is a very specific service that the Women's Center is providing, using the forty thousand dollars that we're providing. It would be helpful to know what, you know, what percentage of that are we funding? For me and building off of what Crystal said. But for the purposes of this amendment, I, what Commissioner Labar said earlier, the statement can be, you know, that it is made possible in part with funding provided by Washtenaw County, if it's not the sole provider. I'm open to that language. But it just needs to be noted somehow at the beginning of the sentence, at the beginning of the Washtenaw Intermediate School District's seven-weekly training workshops, there should be a slide that says, this training workshop was provided by Washtenaw County. And there's a county logo and it's Washtenaw County Government. And it's paid for in part by, or it's paid for and all by. I just, I don't think that's too much to ask for and I, I'm trying to figure out how we proceed with this in a way that makes sense, but how should we, Chair, do you have any ideas of what we should do here?
I, I'm gonna give you some ideas to proceed, but Commissioner Hodge, if you could see an example of chomping at the bit in real life, that is him right now trying to make a comment, so.
Okay, I have an idea. So, okay, the, the hope here is that we have like a rough framework to come back with for second reading. If the two of you withdraw the motion, the amendment, and we could just pass this first reading, we'd be good to go. Alternatively, I would call it a question.
Did you call the question?
He said he would like you to withdraw.
Withdraw the amendment, the two of you, then we could just.
Wow, that's, I feel like that's like, it's almost a little threatening there.
What's two ideas?
Sliding, you know his plan of action.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I, I'm open to that. I'm open to withdrawing them. I'm very open to it. I think my only hesitation is that Commissioner Somerville's right, that it's better to not just ask staff to do things in between meetings and actually direct our staff to do stuff. Because I guess like one of the things I'm expressing is that before our next meeting, I would like to see from each of these organizations what their plan of attack is for getting the word out to the people that they're serving with the program. And it sounds like you guys have told me that you're good to do that.
Yes, we've already requested that.
So, and I guess I'm, I don't know, I'll defer to Commissioner Somerville. I'm on the fence. I'm okay withdrawing, but she's right.
I, I have a suggestion for you both. Why, why don't you, I mean, like, I understand that maybe it's just words. I, I mean, I was gonna say your, the amendment could be to, to direct staff, but that's just words.
I mean, if they can give me the information before the next meeting, that's what I care about. I would like this language included ultimately, something like this in the final resolution because I think it is good moving forward, like you said, in future. For this vote though, I, I, that's information that I want as a decision maker. But Commissioner Somerville, I, I want to hear her comment.
You think? Commissioner Somerville? Thank you Chair. I just, I think it is good practice for us to operate under making motions because if one commissioner says something to rec, to direct staff and they just say yes, which in my opinion, happens too often and we don't have an opportunity to weigh in and then that is not how like democracy works. So that's why I'm interested in doing more of that. Like, it's just how we should do things. Secondly, I would be comfortable if we directed staff to give organizations like different options of what they could do and make sure that it's like something that they I think it sounds like they've already done that, but I think we should, like, we could require, you have to use one of these options that are free and not hassle. I don't know. So, but I'm saying all of that to say, I'm happy to withdraw the motion. I just think it's important that we make amendments instead of just telling staff and not having all of us do the work of either supporting something or not supporting it.
I think that's why people elect us. I think you're correct, Commissioner Somerville and Robbie. So the motion is withdrawn, so now we go back to the original.
I withdraw the motion.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And there was a consent from Commissioner Somerville. So now we go back to discussing the original item, the resolution itself. Any more discussion on that, Commissioner Somerville?
I just wanted to, I guess, just generally, I think that when, when we're I think there are a lot of different ways that we can get feedback from community members about different programs that different organizations do and sometimes part of organizations, like some of the stuff that they do. There could be more complaints about something depending on what it is. And I'll just give SOS as an example. SOS is a pass-through organization for, as an entry point for the homelessness system. And so in my experience, when I've talked to constituents who are frustrated, it has to do with wait lists, which are like a national, state and county issue. When you have people waiting to be placed in rapid rehousing or be placed in shelter. And so I just want to kind of separate that from what the actual program is that's in the application. I think it's totally valid to accept like criticism. I think it's totally valid to accept like criticism. But I also think as a board, we need to consider where, like, why some of the frustration exists. And it's, it really is lack of space to relocate people once they become homeless. Not, uh, yeah, not capacity. So you have to have places to place people in and that's why waitlists become so long. It's not so much the, the call center anymore because we've worked really hard to fully staff that. But it's, it's passed through, we pass through funds to SOS for families. We pass through funds to Shelter Association for Adults. The waitlists have to do with like not actually having placement, which is something that I know we're all working on, whether it's trying to find permanent shelter space for adults or permanent shelter space for families or long-term housing capacity, which I think is all of our goal. Obviously, there's other items later in our meeting that go in that direction. So I just wanted to clarify, like, some of the criticism, criticism is valid, reflection is valid. But I also think we need to be serious about why some of the feedback we're getting in the community exists. And it's because of gaps that are not the fault of that organization.
Commissioner Hodge and then Light and then Robbie.
I want to call a question.
Oh, okay. That's a non-debatable item. I don't need a second for that. Okay, we are calling the question. And this would be a voice vote for both A and B. But I think we're probably primarily calling a question on B. So this is a two-thirds vote.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Light.
I have a question. If I want to, is this for A and B?
This, yeah, because we moved both of them together. So it's, it's calling the question to go right to the vote.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, uh, then we'll go right to, this is now a voice vote. On the first reading of the resolutions, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, items passed. Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, I would like to vote yes on all items except the University of Michigan Program for Multicultural Health. And I'm not going to vote on that item. For budget items, you can separate each item and vote separately.
You can, but you, you said you weren't voting yes or no. And I think our board rules state that you have to vote yes or no. That's what I was conferring with corp counsel on.
Can I move for the item to be considered separately?
We, I think you would have had to do that in the beginning when we moved the items. Commissioner Robbie, while you're contemplating, can I move to a question Commissioner Light has? Is that okay?
Is that okay? So as, because I was doing the same as Commissioner Robbie, are we not able to remove one organization from our vote?
You can, you can remove one organization. My, the, the point of order was on the board rules. You have to vote yes or no. There's no, there's no abstention. So that, that's what I'm asking. So if you want, we, we just did a voice vote and it passed. Like, so this is sort of a moot point at this point because the item has passed. And then Commissioner Robbie just wanted to note that he was going to vote yes, but then pulled out the University of Michigan Program for Multicultural Health without a yes or no. So my stopping point here was that we can't have a, uh, you cannot have an abstention per board rules. You have to vote yes or no. My suggestion is that this is first reading. It's a voice vote. It passed. That we could spend a lot of time perseverating on this. But the ultimate business at hand is that the item passed and it will be coming back in two weeks or we can have the discussion further.
Well, just on record, I said nay, just on record.
All right, thank you. Thank you. That's helpful.
Did you vote no on the whole thing? Well, you can just vote no.
Vote no just on one of the things.
You can pull that item out and just vote no on that and vote yes on the rest if you wanted to.
But it already passed?
Also didn't ask, but you also didn't ask for people's votes. And you didn't say, does anybody vote nay? And that was the opportunity. And you can always separate these items out.
I, I did ask for a no vote. And she said no.
Well, I didn't say anything.
That's a voice vote. That's your choice in a voice vote to say nothing. But it gets, if you say nothing, it's recorded and be yes. Commissioner Light?
So I just want clarity. Would I have been able to say yes on everything but SOS Community Service? In a voice vote, I thought you were saying that we could not do that. That's what Commissioner Robbie was asking.
That is not what I'm saying. I'm saying you have to vote yes or no. Commissioner Robbie was saying he wanted to vote nothing.
You can, you can vote no on a specific item on here if you want.
You can vote no on a specific item.
And yes on the rest if you wanted to.
I want to change my vote.
Well, the vote has already happened.
Well, I said nay, so, oh well.
Who said nay?
Typically, the clerk records if there's a difference of vote and it's not. So is the clerk going to record that?
Record what, Commissioner Robbie?
There's certain items that people don't want to vote yes on. How, can I ask the clerk how they're going to record that? I didn't vote on that one.
Did you want to vote no on?
I, I think that we need to, like, what is helpful to understand from now on when we have a first reading, which is always a voice vote.
It doesn't have to be, though.
It doesn't, if you want to wait and let me finish, I will get there. If there is an understanding that people are going to pull things out separately, asking the chair to have a roll call vote in that instance would be acceptable and per Roberts rules, the correct thing to do. I did not hear that question ahead of time. I cannot anticipate what is in all of y'alls heads, especially at ten o'clock at night. So if we want to have roll call votes on items like this at the table, it is fine. Just indicate, Chair, could we have a roll call vote on item B? Knowing that first readings are a voice vote, that would be helpful. As of right now, I'm going to move the agenda forward to the final readings.
I want to know how my vote was recorded, though.
So how would you like your vote, vote, uh, vote recorded?
How do you usually record voice votes?
Um, I'll say who, if it passed or not, like.
You don't actually record, so right now you haven't recorded as it passed.
I recorded that it did pass, yes.
And but you didn't record individual votes.
I, uh, recorded that.
Not a roll call vote.
Yes.
It was, so it passed, but you recorded that she voted no.
Yes.
On a roll call vote, it is a simple yes, an up or down. So, I mean, on a voice vote, pardon me, pardon me, on a voice vote, it is a simple yes or down. I would assume that the way that the, the clerk will record that is that the item passed because okay, we didn't have a roll call vote. So, um, let's be clear, it was a voice vote, the voice vote passed. We're moving forward to final reading. Somebody like to move the final reading items, Commissioner Labar?
Thanks, Chair. Um, on to a final reading. Uh, forgive me, uh.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, uh, final reading, uh, A, Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of the Materials Management Planning Grant. B, A Resolution to Approve All Formula Grants Received by OCED for 2025 calendar year. Then C, A Resolution Authorizing the Signature of the County Administrator on the Contract for CMH Worker Integration uh, to Improve Equity Grant from the Health Department. Support.
Anybody would like to pull anything for separate consideration in here? Uh, Commissioner Sanders? Sorry.
Your final reading?
We're, yeah, we're in final reading. Anything you want to pull, you want to pull B, okay?
B?
Okay, B, yeah. Any other things pulled for separate consideration? All right, let's talk about A and C ahead of B. Uh, any comments, questions, concerns on A and C? Okay, I don't see any. We'll, we'll, um, we will do a roll call vote on items A and C. Ashlyn?
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski. Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville. Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Almost passed.
Thank you. Um, item B, discussion on this item.
Have difficulty getting to the portal. I'm on here now and I'm trying to read it.
If you want my computer where I have the portal open, I'm happy to hand it out to you.
Okay, so I, I had, I wanted public clarity on uh, continuum of care planning, that amount, specifically planning to do what? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, the Continuum of Care Planning Grant is a component of the, all of the community-wide planning grants. So I believe it's about three percent of all of the Washtenaw County Continuum of Care. Uh, OCED acts as the lead agency for Washtenaw County Community Continuum of Care and the collaborative applicant. Uh, so that Continuum of Care team supports the Continuum of Care Board uh, and work with continuum care providers on the broad issues of homelessness in the community. And they also do the collaborative application to HUD for those services that's handled annually. So working with those agencies to collect the data and collect what is necessary to submit to HUD uh, for approval of the Continuum of Care grants for, um, rapid rehousing. I don't remember. I remember the acronym. I don't remember the specific service off the top of my head, uh, but also including HMIS services.
So do you know if this amount is in alignment with previous requests or previous, um, annual requests? Do you have any idea?
Uh, so it's an increase, uh, so it's not necessarily a request. It's a percentage of, uh, the grants. So it is an increase from previous years.
Any idea what the increase is percentage-wise?
I can go off the top of my head, uh.
Last year, maybe?
So last, this is slightly hard. I think last year was about three twenty-three. Um, so it's, it's increased a significant amount in the last two years.
Do they give you reasons why?
Uh, so I, it, I think it's, I believe, uh, it's just a portion of the Continuum of Care grants. So there are a bucket of our community-wide continuum of, continuum of care grants that agencies receive annually. We are not the fiduciary for the Continuum of Care, so each individual agency in the Continuum of Care has a separate contract with HUD. There are permanent grants and then there also is a competitive part of that process in the grant funding. So as it relates to, for this year-wide is increase, I can certainly look for that answer uh, and follow back up with it. I will say that can, the Continuum of Care Planning Grant, along with a number of other human services grant, yes, human services grants don't necessarily fully support the cost of staff and that programming. The increases here in this grant are helping to better support the costs for the staff who are actually doing the work in this program.
So this, okay, so the money goes to whom?
The money comes to OCED. So we are not a fiduciary for the Continuum of Care. We receive two grants within the Continuum of Care, that is the Continuum of Care Planning Grant and the HMIS Grant.
And then you distribute it to?
Nope. That stays at OCED. It funds staff for those programs, the COC and HMIS. Uh, it funds staff, it funds indirect costs, uh, and any kind of supporting administrative costs for those staff.
You said it funds indirect costs.
Yep, so we are allocated cap at OCED and we charge those out, uh, to our relevant grants.
Which is what percentage? What's? Ideas, I'm sorry.
It, no worries. Uh, it depends. It depends on kind of staff time dedicated to that program. So I, off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly for this program. I could say it's between twenty to, I would say it's probably closer to about twenty percent, I would say. But I, off the top of my head, I don't have that number, but I can grab it quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments or concerns? The, these are, um, just as a reminder, formula grants. Um, and the county is not responsible for any of the, um, which does not obligate general funds from the county for these formula grants. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Roll call. Uh, Ashlyn?
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
I feel like you need to come back to me, but reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. You get to have the money line, Ashlyn. Motion passed. All right, single reading. Who would like to move single readings, Commissioner Labar?
I'm just single reading, A, A Resolution Approving a Vendor to Complete a Housing Proposal Award Contract to HR and A Advisors. Uh, under B, uh, previously mentioned, uh, Resolution Proclaiming April as Celebratory Diversity Month. C, A Resolution Recognizing April Twenty-second as Earth Day. D, A Resolution Recognizing April Seven as World Health Day. E, uh, previously noted, uh, Resolution Proclaiming April Thirteenth through April Nineteenth as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, uh, and then claimed.
Is there a second?
Second, sport.
Thank you. Um, any discussion or anybody want to pull anything in this group of items? Commissioner Robbie? Item, sorry, B, B? Any other discussion on items A, C, D or E? Okay, uh, that's a roll call and then we'll come back to B.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Resolutions passed.
Thank you. Uh, uh, item B, comments, questions, concerns? Item B? Item B? You, you pulled it, you don't have any, anything? Okay, all right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sanders.
It's my celebration month, so I'm gonna say yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Resolution passed.
Thank you. Um, we are now on to item 12, items for current and future discussion. Commissioner Robbie?
Since I didn't get the opportunity to talk about it um earlier when I was cut off because we called the question, uh, I did want to make sure to mention that when these grants do come back to us, uh, I would like to see incorporated in the um resolution, A, uh, on the University of Michigan Grant. I do want, if, if we're gonna grant that $40,000, I would like to see the county make a statement to the University of Michigan um expressing its displeasure with the fact that the D I program was defunded. In fact, I also came up with the idea that uh perhaps when they're actually delivering the services um through that program, that are, the statement that they could provide to this, those that are receiving the service could include something that says Washtenaw County Supports Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion as a, as part of the statement of Washtenaw County's provision of support for that program, uh, sort of as like um a way to, you know, show our support for that as well. So I would like to see some inclusion of that in the resolution that we get um for amendment on second reading. That's what I was gonna say earlier, uh, before the question was called, and I wasn't able to say it.
Thank you, Commissioner Robbie.
I said it anyways, which goes to show you how useful calling the question is, so.
Um, I have no problem going home this evening um and drafting that letter um to, to send on behalf of the Board of Commissioners with all of us signing it. I'll work on that and send something out to my colleagues this week. There's nothing more I love to do than write a strongly worded letter. I've loved it since I was young, so. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you. I was hoping to get in there before you to apologize that Commissioner Robbie didn't get the opportunity to say that last piece. I thought that based on the other part from the conversation that we had an agreement that we were gonna work on that piece of it, either the two additional clauses to add to second reading or text for a strongly worded letter, I, because I do want that added into it. Uh, so that was my intention. I'm sorry you weren't able to express that during the debate piece for it. Uh, but I will happy to be work with you, I'll be happy to work with you, Chair Scott, on any language related to the U of M component.
I will write that letter specifically calling in to, to mind this funding also that.
Well, I was thinking we would have some sort, something that was part of the resolution too, though.
That, that's great. I will work on the letter so we can get it as part of the resolution. Uh, Commissioner Light?
For future discussion, um, I would like for our board leadership to incorporate discussion about um our Sheriff's Office. Uh, there are some things that I would like to be brought to the table, um, because there has been several converha- conversations um behind closed doors. And um I think it's time for us to have a conversation um amongst the public and for our residents um to understand um what we have going on. So I would like to ask for that. I don't have a timing on it, I just would like for that to be brought forth uh because it, there are some things that are coming up in the community with our employees, and so if that could just be put on uh for further discussion, thank you.
Thank you. Any other items for current and future, just, oh, Commissioner Beaman? Thank you.
Mine's just really quick. My mom celebrated her 70th birthday yesterday, so I want to say happy birthday, Mom.
Commissioner Light, Commissioner Light, and then Somerville. Oh, oh, Machewski, I'm so sorry. Okay, Machewski, Somerville, Light.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to extend thanks to Andrew and all the county staff that was involved in the Western Washtenaw Regional Advisory Group meeting a few weeks ago. Um, really in the road commission as well was there. Um, really got great feedback on that meeting, and uh, I think we covered a lot of ground and communicating with county in the western part of the county, uh, county admin in the western part of the county. Municipality is greatly appreciated, I appreciate the effort. Um, one thing I do want to highlight from that meeting, Chris, um, Shar was there from the broadband um project, and noted that our broadband project will be 99% completed by the end of the calendar year. And I wanted to note that one of the federal funding casualties appears to be the BEAT Fund, which a lot of people have been pointing out saying, why didn't we go after the BEAT Fund? Well, there's not gonna be a BEAT Fund, apparently. Um, but we're gonna get our project done. And so, um, again, wanted to thank all the people that going back probably eight, nine years have been working on this broadband project. Uh, and glad, glad to see that we got it done. I also want to note that um on final reading, I would have voted yes on A and C, and I was trying to time my, my brain. I mistimed it, apparently missed that vote, I would have voted yes almost too.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody in the community knew that my cats, Max and Winnie, celebrated their 11th birthday yesterday.
Commissioner Lights?
On Friday, my son, Terrence II, will be turning 11, uh, 12. He's gonna be a tween. And we gonna party all weekend, so don't call me.
Any other uh, uh, items for current and future discussion for the good, oh, Commissioner Robbie?
I do, I do have something else. This is not a joke, but um it, not that your things were a joke, but it, it's all very important. It's all very important, but as, so uh, I had a conversation with um Ashley earlier because uh one, one of our public commenters that's here came up, you didn't talk about this, but the uh, the Lane Project was initiated in my mind when I saw you walk up to the uh, to the podium. So I wanted to report back that I did talk to um SEMCOG staff about the Lane Project. And it does sound like um it won't actually come to SEMCOG necessarily. It might come to SEMCOG, but it also might not. Um, but there is a review process that's ongoing right now. And the state M dot, she sent me the M dot folks that we should be in touch with to submit our commentary on it. So I asked Ashley, and the chair is nodding, that maybe at the next meeting, we can have a resolution um for us to approve, to submit public comment to M dot expressing our disapproval of the project. Because we don't know exactly when it's gonna, if it's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, and it sounds like because it's a privately funded project technically, that they don't need an amendment to the tip, is what I was told, unless there's some type of um opposition from enough groups, I guess, then they, we can basically ask for it to go to SEMCOG. Um, and in order to initiate that process, we would need to vote on something here to basically say we're entering public comment, and this is something that then Jason and I will have to work with SEMCOG to try to get it to actually get voted on.
That's very helpful. Um, I've talked to a few people in the community about that lane. There is not a lot of support for that, I feel like, around our community, so. Any other items for current and future discussion? No more cats, dogs, parents. Um, I want to say just uh as a point, I really appreciate this group of, of Commissioners coming to the table. Um, and for staff, and when saying I was having one of my little um bird-to-go episodes, which is mostly past now, it's so weird. Um, people are bringing me water and ginger ale and being generally caring, and that just is in microcosm, how we are as a community. So thank you very much, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
For?
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, record that.